It is Monday, May tenth, two thousand and twenty-one. We'll start this meeting with a roll call and determination of quorum.
Nordstrom.
Here.
Wyffenbach. Roberts. Strowman. Armstrong. Jones.
Here.
Lehman. Solomon. Evans. Drew. We have a quorum.
Okay, thank you. And now if you'll join me for the pledge of allegiance.
Pledge of allegiance.
Thank you, everyone. And now for the adoption of the agenda. Would there be a motion? Motion to adopt the agenda by Armstrong and a second by Jones. Welcome back, Mr. Jones.
Thank you.
All in favor of adoption of the agenda, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Okay, folks, this is a special council meeting. There's been some confusion about the council meeting here, the, uh, the way this is laid out. And here's what the purpose of tonight's meeting is. There are eight, I believe, eight department directors who are going to address the city council and give brief presentations. They've all agreed to keep it fifteen minutes or less. And so we have two hours budgeted for this meeting. At the end of those presentations, no action will be taken by the council. So in other words, we're not going to vote on approving or rejecting any of these items. That will be left to some future process or future meeting date. Then, uh, so because of the nature of the meeting, no action being taken, presentations only, we don't have a, we don't have a public comment period, which is in accordance with state law. And so, um, with that, we'll start with the first presentation, which is our city finance director, Pauline Sumption.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. And I promise you I will not take fifteen minutes. So depending on how many questions you have, it should be fairly short. Um, I am standing before you in, um, in order to bring forward the opportunity capture fund and possible funding for that. We are requesting two million dollars to, uh, feed into that fund. If you are not aware of what the opportunity capture fund is, it was a fund that was established back in two thousand and six, originally funded through the Vision Fund, uh, to be able to give grants to businesses that were either relocating to Rapid City, South Dakota, or businesses that were already here that look to expand their operations. Since two thousand and six, we've continually put money into the fund. Uh, it ranged anywhere, it started with a million dollars the first year. Some years were three hundred thousand. The most it ever was, was one point two million dollars. And then just in two thousand and nineteen, the last year that funding was provided for that program, there is about two million dollars that was reimbursed to the fund for the Cabela's Tid, if you remember that. So Cabela's was probably our, and is our biggest, uh, can company that received funding from us, and that was to get them to locate one of their operations here. There's a whole long agreement on that, making them stay for a certain amount of time. But then we did reimburse the fund for those, those dollars. The other one that we used that was a large amount was for the first business incubator over at the School of Mines property through Black Hills Community Development. The funding came straight from, from this fund to do so. Lance and Laura are your current representatives on that committee. We get together as needed, Elevate comes and presents projects to, to that committee, and then we bring them forward to the council for grant purposes. Uh, there are usually clawback provisions if they don't meet their, um, sorry, their, their, the requirements, some of them, they have to have a certain number of jobs. Some of them have had to get a lease signed. Some of them had to build, that type of thing. The funding is used for, um, typically for like fixed assets, leasehold improvements, that type of thing. But the thing that we'd like to concentrate on is this is to bring that, those businesses here that typically would have a larger wage for the individual person. Um, our goal as a city is always to increase those wages for our residents, and this is one of the tools that gets us there. Currently, the fund has a balance of about three hundred and fifty-eight thousand dollars, which doesn't really do a whole lot for many businesses nowadays. However, we, we would still use that, those funds should somebody come forward. In speaking with Matt at Economic Development, they've had over fifty companies in the last year that had been inquiring about coming to Rapid City because of the way South Dakota handled itself during the COVID pandemic, during the height of it. So while this is not a COVID-related, um, funding source at this point, we've already met the requirements for that. It is very much a reason why the funding is needed for this program. And so with that, I would take any questions that you might have.
Council have any questions for Ms. Sumption? Ron Wyffenbach.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Um, I have probably several questions. I know it'd be better to send an email. We're, we're just, are we just kind of preliminarily, I mean, it's the first we heard of it, so I've got like several questions and it'd be easier for the, put them out on email to her or, or whatever.
Well, I think you'd get more detail perhaps in an email. Um, I know, uh, Pauline has a lot of knowledge on this topic and can probably supply, um, a lot more information.
I think it'd probably be best if I send you an email, Pauline, because I got several questions that may take some research and so I'm just gonna, uh, yield right now and, uh, hopefully the citizens of my ward will ask me questions too that I can forward to you. But I could think of five or six that have pretty well detailed and give you a chance to look up the, the answers. So thank you, Mr. Mayor.
I appreciate that opportunity as well instead of off the cuff if it's research entailed.
Okay. Well, it looks like that's all the questions. Thank you. Richie Nordstrom.
Mayor, this is just primarily for you, but, um, it, it is, there's a lot of questions that I have also, but I, 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 I am not going to spend the time with the directors tonight, and I'm not fully prepared on all the questions anyway, so I would like to do the same process as to send it, uh, an email to someone who would that be going through your office or directly to the directors.
I would send it directly to the directors and preferably in this next week.
Yes.
And then that would allow them time to get the answers and get it back to you in a timely manner.
Thank you. I yield.
Okay. All right. Next on the list of presentations, library director Terry Davis.
Good evening. Thank you for your attention to these proposals tonight. Um, like Pauline, I'm not going to be anywhere near the fifteen minutes timeframe. In a nutshell, I'm here to ask for up to three hundred thousand dollars to fund a bookmobile. And that up to is a, an important piece which I'll expand on in a little bit. We have researched this fairly well and have determined that a bookmobile is going to be the most cost-effective and flexible means of reaching library services to all areas of the community. We would not be tied to a bricks and mortar building. We would have the flexibility to move services wherever the community grows and expands and also in underserved areas of the community. Uh, we have done mapping with the GIS department to identify our service holes in the community. And a lot of those do overlap with the areas where the household income is the lowest. So it is important to get library services out to those folks. Like I said, we have had branch libraries. We had the one most recently at the General Beetle School. What we lacked there was, um, the ability to provide full services, the ability to really serve adults because they couldn't come into the school building during the day. And the visibility as the library. A lot of people thought they were walking into a school instead of into the library. And so a bookmobile, a branded bookmobile would allow us to have that visibility and flexibility in the community. We have been, um, piloting a bookmobile type service since last summer. This is our pop-up library that you may have heard about. We've taken it out into the community. It's great, but there are challenges mostly with the weather. We started, um, May first this year and have already had bits of hail and rain and wind and that sort of thing. Again, a bookmobile would shield us from those, uh, challenges and allow us to continue the service, uh, throughout the year more than we can do so now with the pop-up. But the pop-up is important because it's giving us good information. We're, we're investigating where there would be likely bookmobile stops in the community, understanding of course over time those could change with the growth in the community. It's also giving us an opportunity to talk to people in those neighborhoods and find out what kind of services and collections they would like to see when the bookmobile comes to visit them. So that's an important aspect. We are also, uh, trying to be very fiscally responsible with this. As I mentioned, a bookmobile is going to be less expensive than a bricks and mortar branch. But we're also looking at sustainable options, um, a plug-in hybrid. We've also talked with one company that operates a much larger vehicle, a Bloodmobile, purely on lithium batteries and solar power. So we know that that is a possible option and would give us long-term sustainability. Now, we're estimating the project cost at three hundred thousand dollars, and that's based on some preliminary, um, proposals that we've had from a couple of companies. However, we have the possibility to apply for some ARPA funds that are administered through the state library. That is on a reimbursement basis and it is capped at a hundred thousand dollars. So it would not be a complete reimbursement. It would be a partial reimbursement. The catch is, we would need to place the order right away, which is why I'm asking for a commitment of those funds. Because otherwise, certainly the prices are going to go up, and if we wait too long, those ARPA funds may have been depleted to other libraries throughout the state. The bookmobile, once we place an order, the delivery timeframe is between twelve and fifteen months. During that time, our library foundation is going to be raising money. They've already secured a grant from Black Hills Energy to help with the sustainability option for the bookmobile, and they will be doing more fundraising in the community. So that means by the time we get this vehicle delivered and it needs to be paid for, our ask to you is very probably going to be significantly less than the three hundred thousand dollars. But we are asking again for that commitment so that we can get the thing ordered and in the pipeline and ready to go, hopefully starting operations sometime in two thousand and twenty-two. And with that, I will do my best to answer any questions if you have them.
Okay, any questions for the library director? All right, well, thank you.
Thank you.
Next up is Police Chief Don Hedrick. Who looks a lot like, oh, never mind.
All right, I'm speaking for the police department. My name is Lieutenant Kathy Bach, and I've been working on this radio project for several years, so I'm going to speak on the topic. Um, we combined the police department and the fire department's projects because we both have the same reasons we need this, um, done. What? Oh, okay, first time. Okay, um, so we need, the state notified us in two thousand and seventeen that they were going to do an update to the radio system, and our radios needed to be P-25 compliant. At about the same time, we were told that our old radios, we could either pay for some software to upgrade them, but most of our radios were fifteen to twenty years old, and that probably wasn't feasible, and Motorola wasn't going to support that platform anymore. So in two thousand and seventeen, we were notified, we were told the switch was going to happen in two thousand and twenty-three of July, and we were recently notified that Rapid City was going to be live June of two thousand and twenty-two. And, um, that they were switching our area at that time. So they bumped us up by a year. So what we need to be compliant is all new radios, portables, vehicle radios, some patrol radios and a couple repeaters. And then we can move all of our radios onto one platform. Currently, our SRT team uses different radios. But this new capability is in all our radios that we're getting will support SRT's, um, mission also. So there's just several different radio platforms that we're going to be purchasing. So the purchases to date, so the police department and the fire department, I'm speaking for the fire department, they're here if they, you have any questions, have already tried to purchase as many radios as we can prior to, but a lot of the budgets were already made in two thousand and seventeen and two thousand and eighteen, so we didn't have a lot of years to budget for this. Um, and then we got moved up, of course, by a year. And so the police department has already purchased several radios that are P-25 compliant to the tune of two hundred and fifty-one thousand dollars. The radios are anywhere from four thousand dollars a radio to six thousand dollars a radio. So they are not, um, cheap by any stretch of the imagination. Um, we have decided as the police department that we are not going to put car radios in our administrator and our investigator vehicles. We are going to put, um, chargers for our portables so we can utilize them. Instead of being in the office, we'll just carry them back and forth to our cars. But we need chargers, uh, radio chargers in our car. And so that was a savings of a hundred and four thousand dollars. And the fire department has done the same. They have purchased a hundred and thirty-three thousand, four hundred dollars worth of radios, which is four, forty-four radios. So the police department still has several radios to purchase, and, um, some of them just need some software upgrades because we, we had purchased some before, and so they're the right kind of radio. They just need some software upgrades. And so that's the breakdown of all the different radios. So the short story is the sixty-five hundreds are radios that go into the vehicles. We're only putting radios in vehicles like marked patrol cars, schoolies on marked cars, any marked patrol car. You do get better coverage with a car radio, and that's why they're six thousand dollars as opposed to four thousand dollars. But as far as our needs, we don't go outside the city limits unlike the fire department, so we don't have a huge need for a lot more power on our radios. And, uh, so the radio purchase for the police department would be four hundred and eighty-two thousand, six hundred and eighty-three dollars and seventy-seven cents. And a similar spreadsheet for the fire department. Pretty self-explanatory, same-ish, same thing. They need portables and they need car radios and some base stations for chargers. And their purchase is five hundred and sixty-five thousand, four hundred and forty-two dollars and twenty-one cents. So the total between both agencies is one million, forty-eight thousand, one hundred and twenty-five, ninety. And again, we need to have this purchase completed, kind of irregardless of funding by, um, June of two thousand and twenty-two. Because our current radios will not work on the state radio system, which is what we use. And I will be available for questions if anybody has questions.
John Roberts.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. And I think this is a no-brainer as far as where some of this money is going to go. I think this is definitely one project that needs to be done out of the money that we have because it's such an important issue that's going to be, needed to be done one way or another. So no matter what, it's going to have to be funded. I think this is the perfect opportunity to fund this without having to stress, you know, our general fund and our budget in the future any. So I will allocate or advocate, I mean, advocate for this all day long because I think this is a perfect project for both the fire department and the police department. Thank you.
Greg Strowman.
Thank you, Mayor. I just have a quick, a couple of quick questions. I didn't see any of those radios on the collar. Are those going to be included in this?
So that just is a, that's just a cord off your base radio. So they still have a radio on their hip, and then they have a cord that goes up. And so ours do include mics, fire departments. That purchase request does include all that. The cost includes the microphone, the battery charger, the battery. Motorola charges you individually for all those items.
Okay, great. And then the other thing is, where are we at in, on body cameras? Do we have sufficient body cameras or is that something further down the line or is that?
We're fully funded for body cameras. We're good.
Okay. Thank you.
Jason Solomon.
Thank you, and thanks for the questions. Great, thanks for your comment, Mr. Roberts. Uh, Lieutenant Bach, can you tell me since the federal government's kind of the one instigating all of this, or is it the state government?
I Googled what P-25 was, and I can't explain it, but yes, it's a,
imposed on us.
It's a radio upgrade that the state radio system's doing, and it's like just better radio controls and they're just, it's more into this timeframe of what we need to be. Our radio system, I think, is pretty old in, in peer, and it goes down sometimes. And I know Motorola has been trying to get them to move to this new way that everybody's using, and so I think it's just finally, I don't know that Motorola is going to support our old system much longer.
I know we're beyond what our opinions are of the new system, but that we have to do it. Have, do you know if the federal government or even the state government has any sort of grants associated with communities who have to change over to this?
So we have seeked out a lot of grants and purchased most of our radios through grant funding. I do not, I mean, I think Dave Kenzer would have found grants if there was that available. I don't think this is a federal government sweeping change that's happening. I just think the system that we are on with the state, and I don't want to speak for the state, but is antiquated, and Motorola is telling them they've got to bring it up to some level.
It looks like we got Fire Chief Culber sent up here.
Ours is the same. Um, we are seeking some grant funds. One of the places that we're looking at is through the federal government, through AFG grant. So we have a pending grant sitting out there. The state has some grant funding out there, so our dollar amount might come down somewhat, depending on how many they give us. On the EMS side of it, they might be able to bring some of that down. So, but to answer your question about P-25, yeah, it's a federally mandated update to the entire radio system for interoperability between, um, agencies and states. So it's all on one type of system so we can communicate better. Um, and they just required that to be done by a certain date. States following along same way, which mandates us to upgrade our system and our radios to be able to, to operate on that system.
Okay.
The other thing just probably worth mentioning is our radios were pretty old and they were working pretty good when we got told about this. I don't know if it's the same for the fire department, but our radios literally started like failing. And so the ones we are purchasing today are replacing failed radios. So I think it's very good time. It kind of forced us to make some radio upgrades because again, they're super expensive, so you try not to purchase them all the time.
I think all of our radios were purchased about the same time, so fifteen to seventeen years ago, I think is the age of these. And they've worked very well for us up to this point. So it's time to replace them anyway, and we're working on that.
Thank you for your time. Pat Jones.
Thank you very much, Mayor. Uh, this, this purchase, would it be impacted at all if there is expansion made to another precinct adding on those things, or is this needed no matter what happens with those, uh, future elements?
So yeah, whether we expand or not, this is what we need today. I mean, if we expanded to another precinct, we probably need another radio in that precinct and stuff like that. But this is just to replace, this is just existing officers, this is just FTEs. Right now, we're not buying a ton of spares. This just gets us to the, to the transfer over.
Right, so nothing would change. This is a must-have in order to continue providing service at the level that we're doing now?
Correct.
Okay. And I think it was cool that the fire department came up and rescued the police department there during that. Kind of like Baywatch.
They don't need, they don't need that. Uh, Ron Wyffenbach.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. And you can correct me if I'm wrong, but this is an ongoing thing. We've been replacing some of these radios a little bit at a time or trying to?
Yeah, we've spent, I can't remember what it's like.
This is the residual, what's left where we need to be to finish it out?
Yeah, we've spent two hundred and fifty thousand. They've spent over a hundred and sixty thousand.
And we had plans to buy more this year and then next year and the year after to make that, and then they accelerated. And actually, when we started this process, it was supposed to be February of two thousand and twenty-two. So we were pretty nervous that we were going to have to have them by February. And so we were scrambling to find, then this comes about, so, and we've applied for another grant to fund all of them. But we did last year also, and we were not awarded that grant last year.
And the ones that we have are still going to be up, are they at this level of these, of these?
They, they, ours, ours, ours will be all obsolete once they turn them on. They are done. We can't even upgrade ours. They're old enough where they can't be software.
Yeah, I meant the ones that you've been working on.
The ones that we have purchased.
We've purchased since, yes, they're good.
Okay.
They're perfect.
They're, they're going to work.
We're calculating in spares and all that stuff. I'm just, just an assumption I'm making, so thank you. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Hey, thank you, guys. And I'll just add on the, I was there when the switch started. This is a, a post-nine-eleven, uh, federal initiative based on the perceived difficulties in communication around nine-eleven. And thank goodness, we had Governor Janklow in office who immediately bought pallets of radios and shipped them to us. But, um, uh, I, that's kind of sarcastically. I mean, he did that, but the old radio system we had was great. Uh, this radio system has had challenges. In fact, we've, uh, we've added at least one tower. So we're already into this project, millions of dollars. And, uh, now this is the final step. But this is the feds coming down through the state and coming down to us. The feds control the airwaves, the frequencies, and that's where it comes from. So hopefully we'll be caught up and no more mandates in the future. We can just replace worn-out equipment, uh, through attrition, uh, like, um, seems more logical. So thanks, everybody. Okay, now, um,
I think we have one more, Mr. Mayor, if that's okay?
Yeah, yes.
All right. Okay, thanks for, uh, having us here tonight. Um, my name is Don Hedrick. For those that don't know me, I'm the chief of police for the Rapid City Police Department. And just going to be talking a little bit about expansion of our police department. And, you know, just to put it clearly on the table, the property that we're looking at is in the area of Sheridan Lake Road and Katrin Boulevard currently. So a little bit of a historical perspective, um, this isn't a, a brand-new topic. We've been researching the southwest corner of our city for a few years now. Back in two thousand and eighteen, we started to have discussions about expansion of our department. You know, we're a growing city, and that means- You know, we're a growing city and that means our department needs to grow along with the city. And we're expecting more population growth here in Rapid City. And we need to make sure that our infrastructure is in place to meet the public safety needs of Rapid City. Along those lines, we are also expecting more growth in the, the southwest corner of the city itself, whether that's population and residential. So, the timing and availability of this potential location meets the growth needs that I had just described. Fairly recently, we became aware of a Public Works project in regards to adding lanes to Sheridan Lake Road. And i-if the city were to purchase some or all of that property, it led to some of the discussion as to could the police department potentially take a look at this building and utilize it if the city was going to purchase it anyways? So, just a little bit more as to why the southwest area. You know, one thing about Rapid City is it's a pretty unique city. And it's pretty cool that we have recreational opportunities right in the heart of our own city. On the flip side of that, we do have some land bridges essentially where, you know, gaps in between the mountain that cause a little bit of, little bit of an issue when we're talking about travel from east to west. You know, the, the gap itself presents challenges for ensuring resources when we're talking about that east-west corridor. You know, I put down a little bit of our response time. This is kind of a snapshot, walking through each sector of our city. What you shoot for, what you'd like to have is about a ten-minute response time for calls for service. And that includes an average of our emergency and non-emergency response. As a, as a general practice, you're looking at about that, that ten minutes is the goal. And as you can see, our west sector is a little bit over that currently, as well as our south and southeast sector. So, we, we already have started the process of decentralizing some. If you look at our north sector calls for service, with those, with the numbers that I have up there, you can see the north side has some additional calls for service in regards to other, in regards to the other areas listed. You know, we've started to branch out and reutilize some of our spaces up north already. We're back in the Rushmore Mall location, operating resources out of that, that spot there. And additionally, we have a, a small office on East Knollwood Drive that we're running some of our community engagement efforts out of there. So, we've already taken some small steps towards decentralizing our police department. But, you know, our current space, the public safety building, we, we're somewhat bursting at the seams. We, we need to look at this for, our expansion for a couple of different reasons. One, the expanding city, but also the growth that's occurred in our police department. You know, the one thing else I'd just add, you know, if you've noticed, I've broken down the city by sectors. That's very much in line with our sector policing model. We follow the sector policing model, essentially keeping our commanders and officers assigned to specific sectors. And what that does is it allows us to build relationships, work on trust, and also focus on proactive police measures. So, you know, spreading out our resources in, in a manner that helps us deliver resources more effectively and to the, the population that we serve. So, okay, so I just put this down as a very, this isn't in stone. This is just kind of a ballpark estimate of what our staffing could look like at some point in that location. We really like the idea of having access to two main thoroughfares. Katron would allow us to deliver resources very quickly to the south side, as well as the Sheridan Lake corridor, which would allow us to, more access to the west side besides the east-west corridors that we typically use. So, you know, this is just sort of a pencil estimate at this point. We do think that about fifteen percent of our staff could operate out of that location. Essentially, having officers from the south and west sectors operating out of that location if we decide to go that direction. We've talked a little bit with the fire department of what it could look like to potentially stage or somewhat cohabitate. We haven't really put down a lot of pen to paper on that. We wanted to see if this idea was going to move forward first, but that's definitely along the discussion. And one thing that's really important to us is our strong relationship with the sheriff's office. We do have a lot of joint ventures and joint teams, which creates an efficiency for the community. You know, there could be the potential for one of our specialty units to, to operate out of this location. This slide is in here just to highlight that, you know, if, if we do decide to go this route and if it all works out, the, the building itself could be utilized as is. However, you know, looking at it, we, you know, there is the potential for us to, it might be good to build an office or two at some point down the road. Additionally, there is one wall that we would like to remove if we go this way. It would essentially open things up and make, make for a more open workspace type of environment. So, there, you know, there, there would be some slight remodel that we'd be looking at if we decide to go this direction. So, moving forward, what does that look like? Last year, the property was appraised and it did come in at one point six-five-five, so one point six million. Our ask is one point eight because we're trying to factor in some of these, the remodel costs that I talked about. You know, if we do have to buy an additional radio, some of the IT needs that will need to go into that property. And signage, I mean, we're going to want to clearly sign that this is a Rapid City Police Department building. So, we're, we believe that some of that additional hundred and forty-five thousand could be put towards remodeling and just some of the things that we'll need to accomplish when we get in there. I don't have all the details on the road project that's accompanying this, but, you know, generally what I've been told is there'd be some discussion about planning and such in 2022 for the, the road upgrade. And that could start moving forward construction in 2024. In communication with the bank, they've been super supportive of this concept and this idea. There is the potential for them to, you know, if everything works as they had planned, they could be out of that building as early as next summer. So, you know, I think if, once we identify what the funding mechanism is for this location, it might help us put together a better timeframe of, you know, one, when the, the road project would move forward and two, when we would be able to potentially make the adjustment. So, just a real quick closing page, I just wanted to again focus in on, you know, as the city expands, we also need to continue to have that on the radar and be able to adjust and evolve. You know, we believe that moving into this, this area town is going to allow us to distribute resources in a more efficient manner. And it's probably just important to mention that we know over fifty percent of our population lives on the west side of town. You know, for us and for our, you know, as a general rule, we want to be in the location where people are living. We want to be more present and I think we have the ability to do that with this potential plan. So, I don't think I took up fifteen minutes and I'm glad Chief Culberson is here if I need to be bailed out and saved. But if there's any questions, I'd be happy to try and answer.
Okay, Jason Solomon.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Thank you, Chief, for the presentation. It's no surprise I strongly support this project. I'm excited about it. I think we have to put first things first and I think investing in things like police and fire are right up there. And I'm, I'm happy to, to help fund this when the time comes. A few questions and, and I've already kind of asked these questions before, but for the sake of everybody else. Talk about the, the growing south side and the access, not just to the west side of Rapid City, but this location and the growing south side of the city, if you wouldn't mind.
Well, we've, you know, we've worked with city planning a little bit just to try to identify, you know, where our city is expanding and growing. You know, it's a long drive from the central part of our city to like Red Rocks, for example. And us being close, more closely based in that location is going to be helpful. But, you know, as I had reiterated, we have seen south, uh, growth on the south side. We've seen apartment complexes and buildings going up in that Rushmore, Mount Rushmore Road area and south of that. And again, having access to these two main thoroughfares is going to allow us quick access to both areas of the city.
And I think several years ago, Chief Jaggeris, who first initiated this idea, and I thank him for that, talked about if anything were to happen in the gap, let's say a fire, which has happened on, on M. Hill, or two construction projects happening at the same time and the police have to respond to the other side of town, that having presence on the other side of town would be very, very helpful, right?
Correct.
And the other great thing, I think, about the timing of this is we all know that real estate is not getting any cheaper. And right now, we have an appraised value of one point eight million. I don't, I don't know that kind of intersection. I don't know how long we keep the value. Have you talked to the bank about whether that appraisal still holds true, whether we have to readjust the price or to a reappraisal?
You know, I've leaned on folks from the Public Works in regards to the, the negotiations back and forth with the bank just because they do this stuff every day, whereas we do not. And they have been in communication. I do not have the answer to that specific question. But what I can tell you is that recent communication that I've had with the bank is they are supportive of this project at this point. And I think if we were able to nail down how we want to go about it, I think they would be partners in this.
Okay. Looks like you got a couple of folks wanting to talk to you. I'll yield.
Richie Nordstrom.
Thank you, Mayor. A couple of follow-up questions for Chief Hedrick, if I may.
Yes.
Chief, could you share with us, maybe I'm blindsiding you and I apologize if that's the case, but we've got some CIP money set aside for that. Has that been calculated into your figures here as well?
That has been set aside separately because I believe there's discussion about Public Works utilizing that if there's a need for some sort of earnest money or planning. And so, right now, that is not included along in, in this presentation.
Thank you. And I'm also excited about seeing this project moving forward. And then if it's possible to keep us in the loop on the, especially from the CIP angle and if it's, if I, if that's more of a question for Public Works, then we'll address that during the CIP committee meeting.
Great. Thank you.
Thank you. I'll yield. Ron Wyffenbach.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. And maybe, maybe the Public Works Department could chime in a little bit on what they're going to be acquisitioning. They're going to need to buy some of this, I think, or there's some level of that. I think Director Teck can maybe give us a little bit of insight into that. So, thank you.
Okay. Public Works Director Dale Tek.
Yeah, that's a great question. As part of the corridor study, certainly anytime you do any road widens and intersection improvements, you've got to, you've got to acquire additional right-of-way. We follow federal guidelines for the acquisition of those properties. As Chief Hedrick mentioned in his presentation, there'd be some access issues, some things that we need to clean up to make that intersection function properly. So, at a minimum, just to acquire some additional property and change some access into this, into this existing property, we would have been well into the six figures of just an acquisition for not the whole property. So, to me, it makes a lot of sense to acquire the whole property. We've got the flexibility then to construct what's needed and then retain the functionality for, for another purpose. So, that, I think, is a win-win situation, certainly for two city departments.
Thank you. I appreciate that because I've been in on this council before when we, we've had to make road adjustments and end up getting sued by the people that didn't want to have it done. So, the, like you'd mentioned, the, the in, in and out turns and all that stuff. So, it could be a win-win. I, I guess I'll profess at this point I'm behind this. And, and I guarantee that every one of my council members up here know what it's like when people are driving down Omaha or West Main when they had construction going and they were complaining about getting to the other side of the town. So, we, we've been down that road. So, thank you, Chief, and thank you, Mr. Tek, and thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Pat Jones.
Thank you, Mayor. Question for Chief Hedrick, if I may. Thank you, Chief. You had a list, I believe, of twenty-six people that you would move to the projected new facility. Would that then require filling those spots back at the, the main headquarters or how would that work?
No, we're not, yeah, let's, thank you for that question. To clarify, we're not asking for additional people. We're just asking for additional space to put our existing people into. So, you know, that number of about twenty-six, there's a lot of give or take there. We just wanted to put something down on paper to draft what it could look like. But we're not, at this point, asking for additional officers for this project specifically.
We still need to fill the positions we have open now. I assume, as I know, we still have some open spots.
Yes, we have, we have a couple of openings that we're working on filling at, at this point. So, if you, anybody knows of any good folks that want to be a police officer, you should have them give me a call.
So, the goal of this is to expand the service with the staffing that we have, once we reach full capacity, and be able to do it quicker and better and in a more efficient manner.
Correct.
Tough to beat that. Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay. Looks like all the questions we have. Thank you. And next on the list, Fire Chief Jason Culberson.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, Council. First, I want to thank Lieutenant Bach for doing our presentation for us on the public safety radios. I didn't bail her out. She did a great job. I just wanted to make sure we got in our two cents about our grant funding. So. I will probably hopefully not take fifteen minutes, but this one could take a little bit. It's been a long time coming. So, I'm here to talk, my first presentation's on Fire Station One. It's our main fire station. It's our location for admin building, our admin offices, where all of our upper-level managers and our administrative staff are housed. We have twelve administrative staff, two maintenance, vehicle maintenance techs, who also, one of them does all of our buildings and grounds, part-time supply acquisition specialists, along with fourteen or so firefighters, paramedic, CMTs that are housed there. Downtown, the downtown working fire station that's attached to this building, we have Truck One, Medic One, Battalion One, and Squad One. And also some backup or cross-staffed units. There are also Medic One. It is the busiest station we have. Medic One has been included in the top fifty ambulances in the nation. So, we're busy. They are busy down there. Pretty much, this is our central station where all of our supplies, everything comes into, each station comes into here to, to access the equipment. So, the building was built in nineteen seventy-five, just after the flood. It was built very well, had lots of space, had a lot of community activities that went on here to include some city council meetings, as you can have evidence in our, our photos. This worked pretty well until the early two thousands when we acquired the ambulance service and added even more staff. But we have been bursting at the seams since the early nineties. So, we've made several attempts at expansion. The first evidence that I could find was in nineteen ninety, so fifteen years after that original building was built. There was a small addition that was going to be put on to the west side of that building to expand some space. However, that never happened. So, this building is in the same footprint as it's been since nineteen seventy-five, with little to no changes. We've had several attempts, like I said, at this expansion. Most recently, for my tenure that I've been there, two thousand and ten era, two thousand and eleven, there was a small planned expansion to the front of the building, about ten feet out and two stories up to push the administrative staff in there and then remodel the interior for a working fire station. Shortly after that, the DSG property came open for one point four million dollars and we purchased that property and plans are in process to build a new fire station and add our maintenance facility all onto that property. That is now the Ascent Vision Center. Pretty cool-looking building. If you ever come down to my office, I'll show you the conceptualized drawings from our old building. They look kind of similar. So, fast forward and that. So, um, fast forward, and that was, and then in 2016, we had our, just the most recent feasibility study and space analysis done. It showed us what we needed at that current time, um, as far as space. And that's what we're working off of today. So how have we dealt with, uh, the ever-increasing size of our department and not expansion of that building? We've moved, um, administrative services out. We moved our Fire and Life Safety Division up to the basement of Station Six, which was supposed to be storage area for our hazmat team, um, which is now storing them in the apparatus floor and just about every nook and cranny in that building. But also in the basement was the old, um, dispatch backup center, which has now moved to Camp Rapids. So Fire and Life Safety takes up that entire building. So they moved up there. We've moved our training division, or training section, excuse me, out. They're at what was formerly the old Station Seven. We now call Station Two, which is up on North Maple Avenue in Anamosa. Um, so we've moved divisions or sections out, big, large work groups that would, we would like to have in our administrative building. Other things we've done is we've put up walls, we've taken down walls, we've moved walls, and we've put offices in places that they shouldn't be. As you can see, we have someone in an office that's, was formerly a closet, so, and it still remains somewhat of a closet and a storage area. We have several of those. All right. So let's get into our current issues and the burning problems that we have currently. Um, as you can see, I've got a couple of different dorm rooms and they're cohabitative common dorms. The one on the left is the Medic One Dorm, the busiest ambulance in the country, or one of the top 50 busiest ambulances in the country. They have to have a separate dorm because they're extremely busy. They're doing 10 to 12 calls a day. So as you can see, it's a cohabitative dorm, and we have males and females sleeping in that closer proximity in that, um, building. On the right is our large common dorm. It's the last one we have in the city. All the other fire stations throughout our city have, um, single dorm rooms for each individual that are broken up in between shift. Each one of those colors signifies a shift, and so that gentleman or lady have their own bed, and it is signified by the different colors. But as you can see, there's some issues there, and privacy issues is the best, is the biggest. Other issues we have, we only have one real lone dorm, main bathroom for our administrative staff. Um, we have eight female administrators here, which Jennifer's standing behind me, or sitting behind me, and she's one of those. So we have lots of issues, but we've not gone just sitting and waiting for something to happen. We've made some updates since that last picture. This last year, we built a wall in our large dorm bathroom. We had a common bathroom, which was the men's bathroom and shower. Um, we put in a wall and split that bathroom up. And so yes, this is the women's bathroom, and yes, there's a urinal in there, because it at one time was a men's large dorm bathroom. Enough to give us a, a toilet and a shower unit on the backside. Next, we put in some dividers in the dorm room. We received those dividers from NAU, right? Yeah, NAU, and were able to put those up and to split those rooms up. Gives a little bit of privacy, but those are only about five foot high, so you can still stand up and see over the top. So all of these were done, and it's, those two things were done to try to give some privacy, but it was a Band-Aid. The reason I say it's a Band-Aid, this is the entrance into the women's bathroom and shower. It's a common work area. It's where all of our folks go to do all their charting, um, all their documentation. It's used as a work room, a training room, and a meeting space. So if, uh, our female employees need to use the restroom or go take a shower, they have to walk through this space to get to there. So it's a Band-Aid. It's not perfect. Don't like it, but this is what we have to deal with at this time. All right. Some of our safety and security for our folks. Some of these pictures are kind of hard to see, and I'd, I really, if you want to come see the station, I'd be happy to give you a grand tour. But what I'm trying to highlight here is you can look in behind there and you'll see there's a washer, two washer units, and then the white PVC pipes are dryers. They're for our bunker gear. In our new initiatives throughout the country or throughout the fire service, cancer's become a huge problem for the fire service. They're recognizing that cancer is one of the leading causes of death for firefighters after they retire. Um, not only is the job very, very, very dangerous in the first place, but then they're exposed to carcinogens, and it gets on their clothing, and it stays in close proximity to their necks, their abdomens, their lower extremities. And so the big deal is to wash your bunker gear. So we put, we've purchased, every station has an extractor unit that they can wash those bunker gear, because they're made out of Nomex. You can't wash them with anything else that's cotton. Otherwise, those fibers get in and they be, lose all their, uh, protective abilities. But as you notice, they finish that, to get the carcinogens off, they wash it in those bunker washers, hang them on those PVC pipes to dry them, but they're sitting out in the middle of the apparatus floor. And so each one of those vehicles starts up, throws out more carcinogens, gets on their bunker gear, and et cetera. Next to those bunker washers is an ice machine, and our ice machine's out in the same place. Just on the other side of that wall is our maintenance facility, is where our maintenance all happens. That's our own sole, um, washer and dryer for the, the folks' um, day-to-day gear. So their t-shirts, pants, socks, et cetera, because they don't need to be taking that stuff home. Their uniforms should be staying at work and not being taken it back to their own private residence to be washed at home. They're exposed to many things. As a lot of you found out about COVID, that's what these guys and gals run into all the time. And it's not COVID. It can be anywhere from tuberculosis to, uh, giardia to, um, RSV, you name it. So we like to have them wash their gear there, and that's the only one, and that's in the interior portions of the building. So we have some real issues. What we're talking about is the green, yellow, and red now. So green areas would be where our sleeping areas or our common areas where you're able to eat. Um, yellow's the transition portions where you'd have a locker room that's separate from the apparatus floor, and then the red's where you have all your dirty equipment. We have no way to do that. Our building basically turns into one big red area, because once they come back from a structure fire to access the shower unit, they have to come into the building and into the center corridor. So further current issues, this is the main hallway going down, um, back to the men's shower and bathroom. The dorm room's on the right-hand side. Further down's the dining room, kitchen, and then our training room. We have lockers stacked along the walls. There's only about 48 inches of space to come down through there. And another thing to really point out is that all of our restrooms in there are non-ADA compliant. They, uh, have a single door, narrow, and the restrooms and the, the toilet facilities are not ADA compliant. So they come out of, it's the main corridor to get to the apparatus floor to get out to the trucks when we have a call. And this is what they're met with, um, outside in the apparatus floor. And I bring this picture because it's a million-dollar ladder truck that's backed in within about 36 inches of those lockers, and that's where their personal protective gear is stored, uh, every day. So this is on-duty and off-duty folks have their gear stored in there. And we, we are about as tight as we can get. Um, there's no more space for them to move about. And obviously, we don't want to damage our million-dollar piece of apparatus. But further, you can see where we have to maneuver Medic One close enough to the door in order for all three ambulances to be stacked into that apparatus floor. That allows us to keep our equipment all inside. All of the medical equipment, obviously, is susceptible to freezing and thawing, and should not ever be, get cold, um, because then it all gets thrown out. And there's probably a hundred thousand dollars worth of medical equipment that would have to be disposed of if we don't do that. This is our maintenance facility, and now we're not talking about moving it out at this point, but that's the ultimate goal, is our maintenance facility will move out. And earlier plans, when we had the DSG property, and when we were discussing about the, um, this particular is making its own space. And we have some plans that potentially are in the works, and we're working through that, but this will maintain them on site. But they don't have facilities appropriate enough to deal with what they can do. Um, these gentlemen can work on our large, um, fire apparatus, but there's no space to lift those up with inside there. We definitely cannot work on our ladder truck within this building, so we have to utilize space that's outside of our, our department. Um, and about the best we can do is you can see the lift, so the ambulances and our light vehicles all can be serviced in here. Further issues, um, it's deteriorating. This is the, the, uh, parking lot slash apron where our vehicles turn around and drive through and back up and go back into the apparatus floor. It's deteriorating. It's breaking apart, needs, and is in major disrepair. Uh, the street department's, the street department has done a fantastic job of helping us patch this up over the course of the years, but it's time. These vehicles are expensive, and it's just causing damage, and something that can be easily avoided. Other things that we have issues with this building, yet we put a brand-new air handling unit on the building, but the building's not built for it. It's inefficient. All of our windows, um, are single-pane. So in my office, it's basically a corner of windows, and those are all single-pane. My, my, uh, office is hot during the summer and cold during the winter, as evidenced today that our air ha- our, it just needs upgrades. Today, I was unable to get my room above 63 degrees in our, in the building. It's a little chilly with the wind and the cold sitting at my back. Much less, sewer is inadequate. We often have backups and, um, issues with that on a frequent basis. So where are we at today? Um, as I've discussed before, there has been plans. I've got facilities, master plans. We're putting things together. Um, we were granted some vision funds for another design and space analysis, and that's what we're in right now. We've partnered with Chamberlain Architects, who they partnered with a company out of Seattle, Washington, uh, TCA, and their, TCA's main job is they have a whole sector of their business that is fire station, uh, related. So we've started that process. Our second meeting is on Thursday, and that'll play into me and my cost estimation. So this is just a basic concept of what we would be adding. Um, basically, in the original 2016 space analysis, we needed to double our space in order to house what we have. So it'll take it from about 19, 18,900 square feet to somewhere in the close to 40,000 square feet area. So this is just blocks showing, uh, conceptually where space could go. We were allowed to be able to go out with the new downtown zoning districts, so we can take our building all the way out to the street, or all the way out to the sidewalk, which allows us to add a large footprint. We want to stay downtown, um, the administrative staff, and obviously, the main fire station's going to stay there. It's an ideal location. It's centrally located between the other stations, and it's right in the heart of where our main call volume is in the center core of the city. So we're looking forward to that. At this point, I'm estimating at the $10 million range. I honestly won't be able to tell you a firm number until, um, Chamberlain Architects and TCA are able to give me that, especially in the current building environment, but that's basing it off of the 2016 study, when they advised it was between eight and nine million dollars to not only renovate the station, but add the, um, administrative portion off to the side, so. And with that, I would entertain any questions about Station One.
Jason Solomon.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Um, thank you, Fire Chief Culberson. I gotta say, our fire department deserves better. Um, it's really disappointing. We've known for years and years, decades, that this has needed attention, and I think the first thing we need to say to the men and women who serve in our fire department is we are sorry that we let it go down this long. During my brief time on council, I've had three fire chiefs, and they've all told me about the need. Uh, Chief Seals, uh, did a great job of walking me through and showing me all of the needs, and continually, this has fallen down the list of priorities, because something else always comes up. I believe, though, that this council is poised to do the right thing and fully fund this project. The, the needs, you've done a great job articulating it, but if we want to recruit women to serve in our fire department, we have to have facilities that actually, um, that they can better operate in, as well as everybody else. Um, we have overcrowding, deterioration, HVAC. I've met in your office. It's really cold and really hot, which is fine. You're the chief. You should take, you should take the heat or the cold, whatever the case may be. But sewer backups, I mean, uh, I proudly supported Ascent Innovation Center in moving, um, and donating that land from the city to have that. It's an amazing, amazing project. The bummer of that was potential usage that we had for the fire department. I knew, when I returned to the council, I kind of made it clear that one of my goals was to get this done. The sooner we get this done, the sooner you get rid of me, council. So I would say, uh, let's, let's get this done. Um, it'll be great to have the actual dollar amount. I think that'll be, uh, very critical. But this is, it's disappointing, um, to me on one hand, because this is not new. Thankfully, this council has already funded the design of a new facility, which tells me, that's why I know that we're poised to do something with it, and not let it sit on a shelf for another 10, 20, 30 years, as we've done before. Uh, now is the time. This is our opportunity. I'm really excited to, um, to see this come to life, and I, um, I appreciate you, uh, doing a good job of sharing the needs with all of us, as well as the community. And, uh, it's our largest, uh, investment that we can make from the city projects, but it is one that is definitely worth it. I am 100% behind this all the way. Thank you.
Thank you. Richie Nordstrom.
Thank you, Mayor. A couple of follow-ups with Chief Culberson. Chief, um, thank you very much for the presentation, and if is it possible that you could re- reissue that, uh, space study that was, uh, done? So I'd like to get a chance to read that over again, and, uh, if that's possible. And then, all of the current issues, uh, can you tell me if that is within that report as well?
On the space analysis from 2016, I don't believe it calls out any of that. Um, it was basically in that design and space analysis was to deal with all of the issues. It was the same remodel and expansion.
Thank you.
We're using that, just so you know, we're using that as a basis. When RJ put in the RFP for that, for the architects, we use that space analysis as the basis for that to, to jumpstart, so.
Some of the general questions I'll have for all the directors, if, if you have these, this slideshow, I, I'd like to take a look at that again and, uh, get all of that additional current issues that are, uh, being mentioned here. Um, then, um, I want to, uh, applaud Jennifer, her and her crew, uh, the additional colleagues that she works with, for being brave, putting up with the conditions that you've had to deal with ever since you've joined the, the fire department. Thank you very much for your service. I just can't say enough about, uh, what you folks are having to go through, and, uh, and, uh, if there's any other way to help you out, I will certainly be looking at and investigating some other possibilities. Do you, Chief, do you still have, um, forgive me, I can't remember his last name, Randy, that's in your mechanics department? He retired?
Randy Ral retired. Uh, Mike Holberg's our maintenance manager now.
Oh, yes.
And we have retired Lieutenant Tyler Wilcox is our second lu- uh, mechanic.
Yes, another good one there, so.
Yep. They both are fantastic.
Very, very good crew that's doing the ma- maintenance on it. And then, um, and then keep us in the loop, if you will, for that future maintenance shop, vehicle repair, whatever, uh, that's going to be determined on that, because, uh, I'm fully supportive of the employees and, uh, the, uh, conditions that you folks have to go through right now. the conditions that you folks have to go through right now. We've got to get that resolved as quickly as possible and so without much further ado, I, I thank you, Chief, and those are just some general questions right now and I'll have some additional ones later on.
Thank you.
Thank you again.
Darla Drew.
Thank you, Mayor. Well, Chief Culberson, I was really surprised that the females were in the same condition and the same type of situation that they were in two thousand fourteen when I first toured the Fire Station One. I know you've already put money into the planning of this. It seems kind of sad to me because you're so landlocked that, you know, if you want to expand again, it's really difficult and so that's kind of a cart-horse thing but I guess I'm a little behind the ball on that one. But I would, I would love to see it move to another location where you could expand if you needed to because this is our number one fire station. And I know there's not, you know, a great deal of land available down in the main corridor but there, there are some we have been able to find so I know we can't move it now but I really wish we could. Now during COVID, did you lose a lot of personnel or, or did you keep a good number of your, your firefighters?
Well, no, I, I wouldn't say we lost them due to COVID. We had that initial retirements. Three, you lost three or four, four gentlemen to retirement right away and we struggled through that year because we weren't able to backfill. We were already down staffing so our folks did more with less and continued until we felt comfortable enough to do a hiring process. What, what'd be interesting is going into this year, what's the residual after last year? Are we going to see some leaving this year after all the stress that they've gone through the last twelve to eighteen months and that'll be what we're kind of watching going forward.
You know, I know you don't have room to expand in many of your places right now but during COVID, a lot of people worked remotely, you know, if they were administrative or, you know, if they were in a position where they didn't have to be in contact with everybody all the time. They could work remotely and do that fairly with effectiveness that was the same as being in an office with people. Have you ever considered that for some of your folks so that you could get them out of closets and things?
Yeah, absolutely. We've experimented with that. We've had some. The difficulty we have is we're fairly small anyway so each person there has a very integral part of that administrative staffing. We, we attempted to utilize some of our EMS billing folks and sent them home to try working from home. It became difficult because people still wanted to come down and, and pay their bill so we always had to keep a presence there. One of our, our administrative assistant, Kayla, she's, she's worked from home a fair amount during COVID but that, she's the face. She's the one you see. She's answering the door so it makes it difficult for her to be there, not be there. Jennifer, all of our administrative staff, each one of the chief officers have attempted to, to work from home. It's just, it's difficult with the nature of our business to do that type of operation. The closest one we have now is our public information officer. She spends a fair amount of time at home, working from home. Most of her things that she can do are able to be done that way.
Well, I was thinking on the people that I think you said were at Fire Station Six now that you moved into a basement area there.
Right. So they're, they're, they're our fire and life safety folks so they're out in the field for the most part. So they're inspecting buildings, they're doing inspectional plans and you have to be on the internal network to get to a lot of those plans and it's difficult for our IT folks when they're remote because they're large files, getting them. There's a lot of issues there. But yes, we, we've investigated and I think we're about as lean as we can at that building.
So you do have people working at home or you don't?
We, part-time, some time, not all the time.
Well, it just seemed to be a, a good answer for people with no space or no place to go during COVID and it seemed to work effectively for a lot of businesses but I think you're an exception. So thank you for the things that you've put up with but I really want to protect your female personnel, especially giving them privacy. This is our biggest ticket item on the list we're looking at tonight but I'm going to support it. You know, it's going to take over half the funds that we have but I'm glad we have them. I'm so happy to be here tonight and looking at these projects because we actually have some money to spend on them this time and it's, it's an incredible position to be in. So thank you for presentation.
Thank you.
Laura Armstrong.
Thank you, Mayor. Chief Culberson, I think this project is way overdue and my heart goes out to you because my husband keeps our house at fifty-eight degrees. If I put my foot down, I can sometimes bump it up to sixty-two. That aside, I was wondering if you can explain the logistics of if and when this project comes to fruition, this being one of the busiest fire stations and has, if anybody has lived through construction in a home and trying to act normal and go around it, obviously if we're going to do this and for this big ticket price, we want to do it right. How do we balance our workload around this massive construction? Please explain that to us.
So one, one of the nice things is we did think about that in the advanced stages of this and that was part of the RFP, to make sure they understood that this needed to remain a working fire station and to Councilwoman Drew's point, we might have to send our folks home. Our administrative staff will do their work from home and then come in when they need to interact with our staff. But realistically, that's part of their charge is to determine how to phase this in and that's how they've explained it, to phase it in, build a, shut down one portion of the building to build out X part, say the dining room and then once that's, then they can, done, they move into that space and go on. So that's one of the challenges that the architects have is to phasing that portion of it. So I'm anxious to see that myself. But we do have some thoughts on our own on where we, what we can do in the interim. But our apparatus should be staying there. We may have to come up with some temporary housing.
Can you explain that TCA partnership with Washington?
Right. So Chamberlain Architects partnered with TCA. Chamberlain, I don't believe had, they, they built, he, he was involved, Brad Burns was involved with Rapid Valley Fire Station so he's the architect for them but felt this one was important enough and wanted to make sure he had the experts on. So he brought in TCA and they have a real expertise in fire stations and they're well-known throughout the country for their expertise and so we're, they're, Brad, Chamberlain Architects are going to lean pretty heavily on them for the, for the design elements of this.
Ron Weifenbach.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I've got probably lots of things to say about this but the only thing I will apologize for is that it wasn't on the council when they made the decision to not build that new fire station on that DSG lot. That was bought to do that, somehow it got circumvented and now we're here where we are. There's no apologies to be made for that. That was a decision that this council made and I appreciate you coming forward and I felt you were a little bit choked up when you were talking about it but you're being honest. It's what happened. It's where we're at today. I appreciate that. I get, you know, some of my other colleagues' comments or, you know, to watch the living quarters and stuff like that, that they, that these young men and women which are, are, they're, you know, great people and they work hard and then they have to come back to that kind of a living condition and, and you're trying to recruit people and I see the same thing in the police department happen and we're recruiting people but yet we don't take the time to think about what these guys are going through on a daily basis, living in their lives and it's simple to go down, ride with a police officer, ride with the fire department. You guys invite us all the time. It doesn't take an analyst to look at the fire department and go, you know, you got some issues there. It doesn't take a seven hundred thousand dollar study to say, we got an issue here or for the police department or for the fire department or wherever those things are. We've got the expertise right here that works in that fire department all day long, all the time. They see it. We just got to pay attention to those signs and give that credence and credibility to those people that are working there and I'll just say one thing. When I, when I, when a newsflash came across that they diverted that airplane to the airport, I was as happy as hell that I knew that they had the most professional people out there to deal with that at the time when it happened. I made that comment to you earlier. I just caution this council to think ahead about things as we make these decisions, as they affect the future. And we talk about planning, we're talking about hiring someone to plan for the parking lot and some people may think that's a simplistic thing but, you know, we have people here that are qualified to do that if we just listen to them and give them the opportunities. It's not rocket science to understand if you go down to the fire department or the police department and look at the conditions these guys are working under once they come back in from the field, you know. To put, hang your, your gear up inside of a garage where there's other carbon monoxide coming through, I mean, I don't know. I, I, that's the only thing I would apologize for is the fact that we didn't do it and we didn't look at planning for, to do it. And that's a simple thing to do. I mean, any one of us up here are capable of handling that. So I appreciate you being bold and coming forward and explaining a little bit of the history of what you guys have been dealing with. I think the time has probably come to really look at this hard and, and look at the options we have available to us. So thank you, Chief. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you.
Neil Evans.
I just had a question, thank you, concerning the site up there. Is that white building, the old city hall, the white thing to the northwest?
That's the current mission, so.
Yeah, the old, old city hall.
Correct.
And then behind that is a parking lot?
Yep.
And those are, are those still all city owns, is that still city-owned property?
I can't answer that.
Does anybody know?
No, so they're all sold, correct? So all the way to the rail tracks.
Okay, so the parking is no longer city property either?
Yeah, that dark, that dark line, that's just, you can see the cars in the dark line, that's a fence line. So everything to the west would be the mission property and we have a portion of that just on the backside of that building. So that's where our staff park.
Yeah, the only reason I ask is because Darla did bring up the lack of room for expansion and perhaps that's something that the city maybe should have held on to or maybe would want to acquire again in the future simply for that reason. So I just wanted to bring that up. Thank you, Darla.
Okay, thank you, Chief. I'll just say that this is embarrassing and I echo the comments of everybody else here. Probably back in the seventies, this was a bunch of mustache-wearing, heavy-duty firefighters that had a brand-new station. Had a brand-new station and everything was great and as, as time went on, there was a need for some responsible modifications to use the workspace in the best way but over the course of twenty-five, thirty-five years, those have become cobbling in nature. So I mean, it's, no one could accuse you folks of not trying to make do with what you had and so it's a bad deal that we're in this position now but not surprising. I mean, anyway, I just think it's embarrassing and I want to tell you and you thanks and everybody for showing up here tonight too, to listen to it.
Thank you. Thank you very much.
So then, on to your next.
The next one, which could tie into the maintenance facility a little bit. I'll get into that as soon as Jim gets up, pulls up my PowerPoint. This one should go a little bit faster but no less important for us is a training facility. We per, I'll just get into it. So we have, used to have a training site out on WDD's, WDT's property on Settivie Lane. We had a burn building and a training tower built on that property. It was a, it was built in two thousand seven and it was a conjunction between the city of Rapid City and Western Dakota Tech for their fire science program. We use it very heavily, not only for the burn portion of that building but training also. There's places that we can, obviously it's a building built for us to kind of beat on. So we can throw ladders up there, bang on the walls, hook up stand pipes, do high-rise operations. We get to practice the things that we don't get to do and we can do them before we have to do them in the real world. I recall one actually really cool training that we did with some of our folks where we hung a car off the side of there and they practiced rappelling down and doing extracations and removing a patient from the car. So we get to practice that before we have to do it in real life and we've had to do things such as that. So this training site was built. It was being utilized. A picture on the right-hand side shows some of the other things we did there. I could have put picture upon picture of things and training props that we had out there but this simulates, he's cutting some concrete but the tubes behind there show what we would practice subsurface. So if guys had to go below the surface or in a collapse, building collapse, so they could practice going through their cutting concrete, rebar, et cetera. So it was a very well-used site. Unfortunately, well fortunately, it was a combined but it was a ninety-nine-year lease. In two thousand fourteen, the site was, WDT obviously built their new campus and left that site in place. They still owned it through some deals through the governor's economic development, RAPSI economic development. The training site was, needed to be vacated because that property was sold and here's what our tower looks like today. That same tower that was in the first picture is now laying in those pieces out on WDT's site. So through that contract, we, we've been in discussions with Western Dakota Tech about putting this piece of property back up or this tower back up. So we started searching for a new site. Rapid City Economic Development was more than happy to help us through that. So one thing I want to bring out is this is our mission statement, prepare, prevent, protect. And number one is prepare and that's the training piece of what we do. We're not able to do that. We haven't been able to do that for the last four years. So since two thousand seventeen, that tower was taken down and when we've been unable to do that. We've begged, borrowed and stole and tried to get on other sites. We've gone out to Ellsworth to do our burn. Our folks need, for our, our new firefighters, they need to go through a live burn in order to be certified and get their pro-board certification. We have to use Ellsworth and there was a time where Ellsworth was remodeling theirs so we were unable to use anything. We definitely don't have a tower. If anybody remembers a picture of Station One, there is a tower on the side of there. We use that but it's very limited. It's our building so we don't bang on that too much but we can still repel and its primary function is a hose drying tower. So, but getting back to this, this is where we need to make sure our folks are preparing for the job that this community is going to ask us to do. And it's going to become more important as time goes on. We've gotten busier. Our call volume this year alone is up seventeen percent over last year, same time. There's some reasons behind that we could get into but it's still a significant amount of increase over what we did last year. So we need to really focus our sites on training and make sure we have the appropriate places and facility for them to train in. This is going to become more important now more than ever. Last year, as we discussed, we lost over a hundred and ten years' worth of experience and we're continuing to lose that daily. And our call volume, seventy-three percent of what we do is medical and so there's a small percentage of that, seventeen percent or twenty-seven percent of that is fire and, but it's no less dangerous than it was twenty years ago. In fact, it's more dangerous. So they need to understand their job and know how to do it well and training is going to be the key piece of that. So here comes the proposal. So what we're looking for is we need to, to, to work forward in our training facility. As I said, Rapid City Economic Development gave us a piece of property down on Creek Drive next to Pepsi, not just up from the work release center. Eighteen acres or so, good-sized property for us to be able to utilize. So we utilized some of our own funds and got FMG to do the preliminary work and design. So this is a picture of the property. You can see the cars out there and we've already cut those up. Those have been used for extrication training for our brand-new folks. If anybody would ever like to go out and take a look at that property, I'd have to take you out there. So here's what we're proposing. It's going to cost about, at last estimate was one point seven, one point eight million dollars. So I put in there two million in taking, trying to take into adjustment of what we're going to be asking for in the current working of what we're going to be asking for in the current working climate. So this is the conceptual master plan for the Fire Station Institute West. So we're looking for the infrastructure pieces, the parking lot, and to put the tower back up. It's really our only ask and it's, ultimately, this is seed money. It's been four years since we've had a tower and we've been able to really look at plans and we need to get moving on this. We have, we haven't been able to brief you about some of the behind the works goings on between Western Dakota Tech and us in accordance with this. And there may be some funding back from them at some point. But that's going through the attorney's office and, and myself and discussions with Dr. Bowman. So what we're looking for is, we want, we want to get it moving. We need to get our training site built and we need our folks to start being able to do their job appropriately. As you can see, there's a lot of functions out there. I know it's kind of tiny, difficult to see, but there's an off-road course, there's a spot for hazmat. We have discussions with the rail company. They're more than happy to figure out how to put a rail car out there for us to train on. Just about anything you can imagine, we could do out there. So really, we're looking for that two million dollars in order to, to start up this site and move it forward. And you can see also, there's a couple of different buildings. One of the concepts was moving Station One out there, which I don't really like that plan being that far out into the edge. But also the maintenance facility is slated to be up in that corner. So we're looking forward to it and hopefully you all will consider that. I'll stand for questions.
Okay, thank you. Laura Armstrong.
Thank you, Mayor. I want to say three, four years ago, I went on a ride around with Chief Seals at that time and he pointed that place out to me. Refresh my memory, it's not just training for our fire department? Was it something about a regional?
Yeah, thank you, thank you. The, the Fire Institute West is designed to be a regional training facility, basically, for Western South Dakota. But realistically, that tower and the training facility is utilized by not only us, but all volunteer agencies that ring around in Pennington County. Just had a conversation about that this morning, that yeah, this, this is farther reached than just Rapid City.
Great. And then also you touched lightly on the railroad company. Do we have to get permission or how?
The rail company was trying to figure out how to get a rail car on there. So just for the training prop.
I just didn't want that to be another obstacle to it.
No, it won't be an obstacle. We've cleared all the obstacles that are on that facility. The FMG's already done all the geotech and have explained what we need to do and that's all included in there.
Great. Thanks for refreshing my memory. I yield.
Thanks for the reminder.
Pat Jones.
Thank you, Mayor. If I may continue with the chief. The use of the facility for training of other, of other fire departments as, as was previously mentioned, I think is, is a no-brainer. It's, it's definitely going to happen. They're going to want to come to the best facility and we would want them to. Would there, would that be a revenue generating thing for the city and the fire department?
It's a great question. Yeah, there's some discussions behind that. There's lots of opportunities. They have probably one of the best section chiefs around to come up with ideas on how to generate revenue and ideas about how to utilize that space. And that has been discussed significantly. How much? Can't really tell you right off the top of my head right now, but there are tons of opportunities. Especially if we have a training facility out there also, a building. And then we can hold classes not only for the fire side of it, but for EMS. It's currently right now, Western Dakota Tech isn't doing their fire science program. So there's a hole out there for that type of training. And we've been in conversations with Casper too, on some of that.
Ron Wyffenbach.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I just, I need, for curiosity's sake, what happened to the ninety-nine year lease?
Well, once they sold the, the property, that lease and that contract was broken.
It just broke the contract?
Correct. And that, that would be a question. I don't want to step too far into that. That's more of a contract.
I can have another discussion with you at another time about that. Because I sat on this council and we fought, God bless his soul, rest in peace, Bill O'Krepeki. Fought and fought and fought and fought to get this done. And it was one of the best things that they did with the Vision Fund money to, to build that thing in conjunction with the Western Dakota Tech. Now, I mean, this is another one of them things, I'm just, just kidding. So appreciate it and I'll have another conversation with Joel some other time about that, unless you want to visit about it, Mr. Mayor.
I don't want to go into too much detail right now, but as Chief Culberson said, we've been having conversations. I mean, ideally, probably some or a good portion, I think, you know, in the one point five million range, hopefully we would ask to have reimbursed. But right now, you know, it's, it's a matter of discussing and you guys will probably hear more about it later, but we're still in conversations with WDT and the school district. And it's further complicated by the fact that the relationship between WDT and the school district isn't the same as it used to be. And, and there's some other factors that complicate it. And I would be happy to talk to any of you that want to discuss it.
I just remember how much blood, sweat and tears. And I don't know if you knew that Mr. O'Krepeki had passed away. But the energy that that guy put into that project to get that to happen. I mean, it was one of the projects on the fringe. It happened and it was, it was a good project. So to see it gone and just like pulled off from underneath, I appreciate that, Joel, for your comments.
There are provisions in the agreement that protect our interests. We're still working through that. I think the problem now is from Chief Culberson's perspective, we're a couple of years down the road and we don't have a training facility. And it's unclear when, if we are able to exercise some of the rights we have in our agreement, when that's going to be. So I think the, the point of this request is to try to get the training facility replaced and some of the other stuff we can work out as we, as we go along. But certainly, nobody's forgotten about our agreements and.
Not at all.
What the obligations are. And we're not in any way suggesting we do that, so.
Then I'll just expand on one thing. To, to get people to understand and the people in the audience are listening, or the people who may be tuned in. My son-in-law is, is a, a police officer in Oklahoma City in the hood. And he went into a situation where there was already gunfire already happening and had to return gunfire. And so just out of curiosity's sake, because I don't put myself into that, you know, I did some military training. But I said, what happened? He says, I don't remember anything. He said, I had to go back to my body cam and see what I did. And what I did was, the training that he had had in place, because they were so rigorous, the police department down there was so rigorous with their training, that automatically, when he went into the situation, it just took over. So the training that these guys are doing is important. And it, it's because you're not always in that situation, like you had mentioned, so I, I get that. And thank you, Chief, and thank you, Joel, and thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Bill Evans.
Thank you, Chief. Was there ever a thought, and if I didn't misunderstand you, I think you said relocating the maintenance facility as well is a priority for the future. Was there ever a thought of maybe acquiring, finding one of these auto dealerships that have relocated in the recent past? You know, they've already got eighteen-foot-high doors. They've already got twenty-five-foot-high ceilings or thirty. And repurposing one of those and combining that with this training site. And I'm thinking, say the Subaru dealership down here with all that vacant land next to it and there may be others around. Has that been looked into at all? Then you kill two birds with one stone.
Yeah, tough question. Thanks for the question. Yes and no. The, we've looked at other buildings such as that, not necessarily a dealership. One thing we run into with the training facility is we do put up smoke. So when we're down there next to Subaru and between Subaru and Liberty, with the old Ziggy buildings and the county halves there and the church, we put up quite a bit of smoke. That's why the Creek Drive property was ideal. Back when Chief Seals looked, he looked at just about everything, trying to find an acquisition piece. We actually considered looking at leasing a building for our maintenance facility in the temporary till we could get it on-site of a city property. And that may still be in the works. So yes and no.
Jason Solomon.
Thank you. And you know, just to, just briefly how important training is and definitely worth the investment. I appreciated Auburn Wyffenbach's comment about training, because as you know, you do go into autopilot. You know, those of us who've been in service, or if you've ever worked in those front lines when your life has depended on it, you aren't, you ever been in a crisis? You know, instincts kick in, but training really kicks in. And I think to save lives and to protect even the lives of our, of those who are in those situations, like your firefighters and perhaps even medics, is definitely worth the investment. And so I, I consider this just as important as Fire Station One. Hope that we'll fully fund this as well. Thank you.
Darla Drew.
Just quickly here, you know, I, we're all in favor of training and saving lives, but I'd like to see, you know, some, some partnerships here. It seems like WDTI is already involved here, but this is regional. And I know Pennington County has some CARES Act funds too. So as long as you're presenting to us, you might want to go forward with them as well and, and see, because this is going to be a destination and regional type facility, we might be able to split some of the costs on this. So that might be a way we can get it done. Thank you.
Okay, Chief, that looks like it. So are we good on the radios or do you need more time on that?
I think I articulated that pretty well, unless somebody has any questions about our radios. Realistically, they're, we need them. We need all three of these.
All right. Thank you very much. Okay, next on the list, HR Director Nick Strout.
Thank you, Mayor, council members. What I did tonight is I wrote a little letter and I can send this to you later if you'd like it in email form. But I'll read from this and then I do have some breakdown of the information on the costs that I can give to you and I'll also email you that as well. But, so what I'm up here talking about today is the potential for a COVID-19 bonus for our employees. When the COVID-19 pandemic reached a town, it was the city employees who selflessly rose up to carry our community through uncharted territory. It was through their perseverance and resolve that Rapid City was able to endure this crisis. These city employees put themselves at risk and in harm's way because that's what our community does. We care about each other and the hard work that we do. To say 2020 was a difficult year would be an understatement. COVID-19 impacted the world to a devastating degree and our city employees were there every step of the way to lead our community in a time when many felt lost. Now is the opportunity to show how much we care about them and commit to allocating a small portion of the COVID-19 relief funds to a bonus payments to our full-time and part-time benefited city employees. Across this city, we watched as our daily lives came to a sudden halt. Businesses tried to adapt, schools went remote, and our citizens tried to cope the best they could. Unfortunately, jobs were lost, kids fell behind in school, and the negative impact on our community's mental health was unfathomable. While, while we, while we watched our neighbors suffer and fight alongside us, Rapid City employees banded together and came to work when needed to make sure the city had the resources and the manpower to handle this crisis. Our city employees were not immune to the loss and struggle that surrounded us. A Kaiser Family Foundation study showed that a jump from ten percent of adults in 2019 to forty percent of adults in 2020 reported symptoms of anxiety and depression. That's a four-hundred percent increase and our city employees had to handle those type of burdens personally, all while internalizing the responsibilities of keeping this community safe and secure. A city needs to operate seamlessly to care for the citizens that it represents. This includes updates of our, upkeep of our streets, collecting garbage, maintaining the water system, providing public safety, collecting monies that is owed to us and much more. The city of Rapid City employees did just that. By choosing to grant our employees with a one-time financial contribution, we would show just how much we truly value their sacrifice and dedication. The city worked together to find innovative ways to provide services to its people and the employees while maintaining key safety protocols. Some people worked from home. There's, there were designated drop-offs for contractors to provide bids for community development to keep our community running. Employees were given the opportunity to act as volunteers for Feeding America to give back to our citizens. And the city's GIS division created a coronavirus, coronavirus response hub, which the city employees launched to quickly provide resources on critical city updates, broader community resources, COVID-19 virus updates and more. This type of action is not unprecedented for our community. In December of 2020, the Rapid City Area Schools paid a stipend of five hundred and twenty-five dollars to all full-time and part-time staff. Dr. Lori Simon is quoted in the Rapid City Journal as saying the payment is a quote, "effort to show you just how much we appreciate you," end quote. This decision by the superintendent and the Rapid City Area School Board sent a strong message to their employees of the district that they understood the mental and physical toll the pandemic was taking on them and that a show of appreciation was in order. As we arrive in, in June of 2021, our state is, our, sorry, our state is offering vaccinations to our citizens across the nation. Mandates are lifting, children returning to school and things are finally starting to feel normal again. Yet the repercussions of this prior year are still affecting our city staff today and will continue to do so. Providing monetary compensation to our employees will be a direct and notable way, not only to say thanks during this period, but show appreciation to those who came to work without hesitation. By allocating a portion of this relief money to our city staff, it will directly impact our local economy, our city morale and the lives of the citizens who supported our city every day and kept Rapid City moving. The proposed employee bonus plan would be to give a bonus of full-time employees who were employed in 2020 and are still employed by the city at the time of disbursement. We are asking for a bonus of a thousand dollars for members of our public safety departments, which is police and fire, and five hundred dollars for all our other full-time and part-time benefited employees. We wanted to make this distinction because even though all of our employees stepped up to the plate when they were asked, our public safety folks had to put themselves in the middle of countless situations where social distancing and contact avoidance were not an option. Whether it was wrestling a potentially infected person to the ground or providing lifesaving medical attention on a coughing citizen, our public and safety employees fulfilled their duty at the potential risk of their own health and lives. I would humbly ask you to consider this one-time COVID bonus for our employees to show that our city council and our community recognizes the importance of the work that was performed during 2020 and early 2021 to keep our city operating in an efficient and safe manner. And I know Chief Hedrick was going to talk to you a little bit about the challenges specifically that the PD folks encountered at 2020, even though I'm sure it's not news to you by any stretch. But I know he's in full support of this plan, so I'll let him talk. Oh, and Chief Culberson, sorry. I just thought firefighter got enough shine tonight, they didn't need more.
Yeah, my throat's sorry.
No, I won't ramble on. You know, as many of you know, it was an incredibly challenging year, particularly challenging for law enforcement and first responders. Whether it was working through a pandemic that caused us to change and evaluate literally every single way that we have done business. You know, policing from home just simply wasn't an option. We had all of our folks work through the pandemic in our building or out on the streets. And you know, I, I just think it would be a, a major show of support if the council were open to this idea, this concept. It would be just a nice way to pat folks on the back that really had a, a difficult and challenging time. So I appreciate Mr. Strout's presentation and thank you for considering it.
Yeah, I'd just emulate what Chief Hedrick said and Director Strout did a fantastic job in his evaluation. I think it pretty much spells it out. It was a difficult year for all of us, difficult year for our, our crews, having changed the way they operated every day and, and put themselves in, in danger and potentially put their families in danger too. So they stepped up and did a fantastic job and I appreciate it.
And so what I hinted you, if, you know, some people are interested in this, is a kind of a breakdown. That number at the bottom, six hundred nineteen, nine sixty-one, that's a, that's, that number will come down because part of the requirements we have is that you'll still have to be employed with the city at the time of disbursement. And we have people leaving employment every day. And so it might come down by a thousand dollars tomorrow or fifteen hundred dollars on Friday, you know, as people leave employment with the city. But so for the Ask Me Non-Union folks, you can see the breakdown. That's the breakdown of us, the non-union and the Ask Me folks and then the police and the fire. And then Pauline was kind enough to break it down by fund for me. So for those of you who like to get into the details, that's kind of the breakdown of the funds. So with that, that's my letter and request. And so if anyone has any questions, happy to ask.
Richie Nordstrom has a question.
Thank you, Mayor, for Nick Strout, please. Nick, thank you very much for the presentation and bringing up the portions about the critical positions, the police and fire. But also, would you take into consideration? positions, the police and fire, but also would you take into consideration the water and wastewater folks as well as solid waste? And I'm leaving out several other departments, but they, these folks are also, if they don't show up, things don't happen as well. I totally agree with the police and fire part of it, but I've got to stand up for the, the other essential employees that we have within the city. And I'm just mentioning a few, but I'd, I'd like to see another recalculation on those if that's possible.
Absolutely, yeah. And, and I'll tell you that we did struggle with this because once we started going down that path, we found it hard to, where did we draw the line? Did we draw the line at the finance people who had to stand there face-to-face with, you know, citizens? What about bus drivers who were forced to be in a bus with people? And so, and it's not to discredit the sacrifice that they made, it's just as we started going down that path, more and more people were falling in the higher category. And so I don't know if it was more out of fiscal responsibility or just in an attempt to actually see this thing through, we, we just decided to draw the line with public safety. But if you'd like to see the numbers with the wastewater, water, solid waste, I could absolutely put that together for you. That's no problem.
And I'm glad you mentioned the, the bus drivers as well because last count I recall is that three of them came down with COVID. And I don't know what their downtime or loss of pay or any of that value to those employees, what happened to them. And so, so anyway, I've just mentioned a few departments, but yeah, it, I think it's one of those areas that need to be reevaluated, so.
Absolutely, yeah. It's just a simple math equation, moving numbers around at this point. We could, we could come up with as many scenarios as this group is interested in, so.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Director. Thank you.
Alderman Nordstrom, just for clarification though, this includes all city employees right now. Okay. Pat Jones.
Thank you, Mayor. Mr. Director Strout, if I may, the, the cost of doing this, and I, I love the idea, is $550,000 according to the sheet that you handed out. And thank you for the sheet because this was exactly what my question was, so I appreciate that. It would cost 70, it will cost $70,000 in, in benefit payments to do a 50, a $550,000 bonus for the staff. Is there any other way to do that just as a flat-out bonus or gift card or anything like that so we wouldn't use up $70,000 of this money in, so, in, you know, the social security, retirement, all that kind of thing to give a, a much deserved bonus to our staff?
Sure, and I, you know, I wouldn't feel comfortable, and I think Pauline had to go, maybe Tracy can speak to this. That's when I provided the 550 number, she came back, Pauline did, and said, actually, it's, it has to be a little bit more, so I'll let.
Well, and whatever the numbers are, it's, it's definitely going to cost us a chunk of change to do the, the benefit. So my, the heart of my question is, is there another way to do it without having it cost us a, a large sum of money? Please.
So your comment about gift cards, the city is not allowed to purchase gift cards. So that isn't an option. We do have to pay it through payroll and we do have to charge the appropriate taxes to it. So that's what the increases that net provided.
And for further clarification, I'll just add that there have been a number of changes in the IRS rules and there's no way to avoid benefits on this type of a thing.
Well, I'm, I'm certainly not against benefits, not by any stretch, but I just, I, you know, seeing that it would cost $70,000 to give $550,000 in bonuses like sitting on a big thumbtack and not knowing which pocket it's in. So I just was hoping if there was a way to look at it differently and see what we can do. Thank you.
Thanks for the visual. Richie Nordstrom.
Thank you, Mayor. And Tracy, you don't need to come back up here, but I, we'll get you some information on what Fremont, California does with the gift cards that they're doing out there. I don't know if it's a state law that we can't do that here, but other cities are doing that, so I will provide that information for you. I'm sorry?
Yeah, it's, it's.
Yeah, I'll just provide the information and then we can get that discussion later on. Thank you.
Okay, Mr. Strout, looks like that's all the questions.
Thank you.
Thank you. Next on the list are Information Technology Director Jim Gilbert.
This is common. Everybody leaves, I'm gonna get up. So, oof, we started this a while ago with PD and fire, but we were rolling out a new program where we are centralizing purchasing of all computers. We might expand it sometime into software and other options, but typically what happens is when we go down the road of looking at budgets, people say, well, that computer's still running, so we're not going to spend on it. So we wanted to create a centralized purchasing program to alleviate the problems we see with unsupported operating systems. Currently, we have quite a few Windows 7 still in our environment. Make it easier on all departments to have their budget numbers handed to them so they can think of the computer on the desktop or the laptop that they're using as a business expense as opposed to a, a capital expense that they can try and squeeze as much blood out of as possible. Also, it'll allow us to standardize equipment and look for better price points when we go to the large vendors. This program has already begun, but the ask for $200,000 is to allow us to make up for the fact that we are currently grossly behind in where we need to be on computer purchases. I have some, the next slide will show that. But basically, I am just asking for the $200,000 as seed money so that we don't have to limp the replacement cycle along over more years so that we can get to the centralized purchasing faster, get the Windows 7 and the old machines out, and move forward with this centralized plan. So here are some statistics. Currently, we're operating at about 37% of our operating systems are not supported by Microsoft, which means basically Windows 7 or before, but they're all Windows 7. There has not been an update for Windows 7 for some time, except for major updates. So these are not being secured in the way that a modern operating system should. The next number is a little embarrassing. We have over 100 machines right now that are out of warranty by more than three years. Again, that's just a facet of a department looking at the expenses that they have versus what they can put on the back burner and oftentimes, computers end up on the back burner. So we really need to do a refresh. That's what this money is for, is to get us back into an idea of a computer. A desktop computer is for five years, a laptop computer is for four years. IT will purchase those, bring those to the departments and alleviate a lot of the headaches that the departments have to go to through currently with deciding which computers to, to update. And as you can see, we're about 25% out of warranty as we currently stand, so. This is probably the more important slide. This tells you what would happen with the, no, no additional funds. We will be out of compliance with standard security practices where we have our operating systems fully supported until 2023. With the additional budget, we would be fully in compliance by the end of next year. And that's just based on the amount of computers we can move in a given time period. Also, we're having some problems with supply chain right now. We have to order our computers as quickly as they become available or they're gone and we might not see them again for two, three weeks at a time. So we want to contract that, have the money available, make purchases while, when we can, get those to the, the people out in the field working, whether it be a police officer, someone at water, or someone at the MRF. We want to be able to go and hand them a computer whenever they need one. And that's about all I have. So if you have any questions, I'm trying to make up some time, so. If you have any questions, please let me know.
That's okay. You don't have to stall. I have a, I have a question and a statement. First of all, the good news is we're finally committing to centralized purchasing. It's been a long time coming and there's been a lot of resistance to it. And so that's good news. Also, IT security is becoming a top priority. And that's, I think at some point, all of us that have been in the city for a while have been part of the problem and now under Jim Gilbert's leadership, we are going to make this very important move. My question is, if you had more money, could you speed up the process? And the question within the question is, are computers available enough to jumpstart this process even more?
We, we could in theory. The limitations would not only be supply chain currently, although I would suspect within six to eight months, we'll see a, a, a pretty good recovery in supply chain based on what I'm seeing. The higher number of computers would probably require a revamp of a position or two in my department to focus more on, on this type of thing. So if we were to combine that with an ask for an FTE, we could probably do that. We, we are operating right now on 12 FTEs, which for a city our size is, is a pretty good, a pretty good number. We, we, we could probably use one for this program if we were going to go. But that could also be a temp because that would be a more of a ramp-up period, so.
So is it useful? Would it be useful or not?
I think, right, well, the way, the way we're looking at it now, we have, we've requested $200,000-ish, it's a little more than that, but based on the number of computers that are out in the environment right now and the, the departments have provided that money. So that's for this year. And that, that's what the amount will be going forward. If we get much more, I would say we could probably, we could probably use $300,000 and get it tackled by mid-2022, but any more than that, we're probably not actually increasing the speed at which, at which we're replacing computers.
All right, thanks. Richie Nordstrom.
Thank you, Mayor. Follow-ups for Mr. Gilbert. Director Gilbert, can you talk a little bit more about cybersecurity? Will these computers that you're looking at be installed with security systems or is it something else your department needs in addition to what's available out there right now?
So desktop computers, intrinsically into themselves, don't necessarily have security systems built on them. They, they, we, we do provide antivirus, well, anti-malware for the city through a vendor. We are moving to a, a different domain structure that'll allow us to easier secure. We have monitoring in place for some things. To be honest, the main thing from a security standpoint is Microsoft is no longer fixing security issues in 25% of our computers because they're out of warranty or they're out of support. That's, that's what, that's the big push, is we need to be able to rely on Microsoft to provide us those security updates so we can install them on the computers because that's where compromises to a system come.
The, the second question I've got is to do with, I'll use the term commodity prices, like everything else, it's going up. I was just curious if you had seen or will be seeing or anticipating these prices as a commodity being increased as well?
Generally speaking, we're, we're probably not going to, well, I think everything will go up if, if models or if what we're seeing is in place. But generally speaking, year to year, what we, we will always evaluate and then the, once we get into the replacement cycle, I will only be predicting what the budget will be one year in advance. So we should be within a few percentage. Computer prices tend not to go up as much as everything else because technology prices go down. For example, a, a computer with the same power that we would have bought two years ago is $60 cheaper this year because hard drives got cheaper, memory got cheaper, motherboard got cheaper. So we, we don't see the inflation that, say, some of the other departments see.
Kind of a wonky comment is that we're starting to see SSD drives instead of the actual physical hard drives, so.
Yeah, you can't buy a physical hard drive for a desktop.
Is that right? Yeah, okay, thank you. And the last question I have for you is the CIP. Are you factoring in any of the, the CIP dollar amounts in with this, with this equipment jumpstart?
No. The, the reason this is coming forward here is because CIP does, is not a good fit for this. It's too many individual components of a very small value, whereas we like to use CIP for a, a larger ticketed items. So this is really, this is so many different departments getting so many 1,000 or less dollar components that we, we decided to ask for it this way, so.
Thank you, Mr. Gilbert. I appreciate it. Laura Armstrong.
Thank you, Mayor. Full transparency, both my daughters are computer majors, so this is near and dear to me, not to say that I understand everything, but they dumb it down for me. And I just wanted to share with our colleagues, with the recent census, we're around that 80,000 mark of population. Hackers, I'm glad that Mr. Nordstrom brought up cybersecurity because we are in that sweet spot. They don't want the little tiny towns, they don't want the big metropolis. This is where they target us, correct? This is usually?
Uh, depends on the type of attack. I mean, Atlanta suffered a malware bite no more than three years ago, so the, it's really, they, it comes down to the old bear analogy. Our goal, you're never 100% secure, you just want to be, you just want to be able to run faster than the other people being chased by the bear, so.
Right. And I know it, IT doesn't seem to be as exciting as fire and police, but it does come down to safety. And anybody who's had a phone that doesn't work or their computer doesn't work at their place of employment, they know that we are just dead in the water without this. So I will humbly request my colleagues to consider this. I do think that you under-budgeted this. You're being very fair and you want to work in with it, but I think the, you mentioned 300 or 400 and we are in the budget process right now, but I feel this is just as an important priority as fire and police.
And to be fair, any, any additional monies that are put towards this would free up monies in other departments because we are, we currently did get $200,000, so we could look at using that as a, an expenditure. And I think it's a fair ask for this because quite honestly, several departments put computer purchases on hold due to COVID. They, they were asked to allocate budgets differently and so they did.
I yield, thank you.
Bill Evans.
Thank you. Well, for those of us who have been sort of computer geeks since 1972, programming IBM 370s, you follow this stuff and what's going on right now. We're sort of at the precipice of big changes in the whole computing world, the corporate and personal. And the first shot across the bow was Apple this fall bringing out their RISC chip based upon this kind of technology that does with five watts what, and $700, what another computer a year ago was doing for $15,000 and 150 watts. And I know Jim has probably followed some of this stuff. And so my concern, right now, Intel missed the boat. Most of our computers have been suspended. Intel or AMD processors in here, I would imagine 99% of those cities' things. There's talk that Intel, because they are not on board and missed it, may not even be in business in three to five years. It's that severe. AMD is bringing out RISC processors. Nvidia, who does all the fancy gaming cards for the fancy game, they purchased the Oxford-based research company that developed all of this RISC processing for phones to make them. And it doesn't matter if it's an Apple phone or a Snapdragon-based phone. I mean, we're right at this precipice of changing. I just want to make sure we don't spend a fortune investing in last year's technology again because in about two years, it's going to be a totally different deal. And I'm just warning, do your own research, but the change is coming and people are dumping Intel stock for that reason. So I'm just saying, know what we're buying and research before we make a huge investment in something that may not be supported in five, seven years. So that's all I'm going to say. And I know it's a huge thing at corporate level because the infrastructure is so significant and everything and there'll be support going on for years. so significant and everything, and there'll be support going on for years and years and years. But we might have the chance to be at the leading edge of something and be good for the next 15 years, as opposed to always being at the trailing edge, and then worrying how much longer we can patch it together. Thank you.
Darla Drew.
Thank you, Mayor. Um, Jim, a couple of years ago, I asked you how many cyber attacks we're having per day, and I believe that the number was 80. Has that, um, gone up substantially?
Uh, again, you, you were asking specifically towards web, if I remember correctly. Those numbers do increase, we're seeing more, uh, we, we typically just block any traffic to our, um, our firewalls from regions. There's really very few legitimate reasons for someone from Russia or China, where we see a lot of the traffic that is tied to that, to, to come into our system, so. Uh, those numbers have increased probably at least up to three. I haven't looked in a while, but I, I would say we're probably seeing at least 300 touches a day.
Wow, okay. Thank you, that's, uh, good information to have. I yield.
Okay, that appears to be all the questions. Thank you. Next up on the list, Greg Balter, Director of the Monument.
Appreciate counsel for, uh, taking time to hear us out today, and I want you all to know, it's not lost on me, that this project doesn't necessarily fit with all the others. This is not helping out our heroes in the police and fire department, this is not, uh, helping with a cyber war in computers, and this is not, uh, helping, uh, educate children and with the bookmobile. This, uh, first project that I have to talk to you about has to do with, uh, the scoring system in the new arena. Uh, when we first set out to design this new arena, we set out to design, uh, this new arena with, uh, centerpiece, uh, center-hung scoreboard, uh, and, and ribbon board all the way around in a horseshoe around that, that scoreboard around the floor. Um, that's exactly what, uh, we designed. Uh, when we got to budget time, uh, it wasn't realistic in the $130 million budget, we, uh, had to make some hard choices on a number of things, and we made the hard choice of moving that to an add alternate list, along with several other items. Um, through the process of the budget, we've done a great job getting a lot of those add alternates back into the budget by, uh, working closely with our contractors, uh, and finding ways to trim out money out of the budget and just work harder and not, or smarter and not harder, and we figured those things out. But unfortunately, this one has so far eluded us, um, that center-hung scoreboard, uh, is, uh, uh, probably important in this way, this is why we see it. It's a matter of fact of a pride, it is a matter of fact of, of, uh, in our, in our industry, helps with our sporting teams and that kind of thing. I do wanna be absolutely fair and state, we can operate without a center-hung scoring system. What we do have in the budget is end-hung scoring boards and a partial ribbon board. And this is to try to get back to a center-hung scoring system in that building, which would help out our sporting teams, and frankly, uh, general public's view is, there's not a real arena unless you put a center-hung chandelier in there. Um, I also wanna be very fair to you and tell you that I intend to continue to find a way to go after that. Um, I'm not done, uh, looking for a way to get after that, but, um, the process of, uh, building, uh, as our window narrows and closer and closer we get to, uh, the, the completion of this building, the ability to, uh, uh, squeeze out of the sponge a little bit more money for those add alternates has become very, very narrow for us. Um, so again, I'm not lost on the fact that this is not like all the other projects, but I did vet this with the city directors, and they thought it was worthy to bring in front of you, so here I am with that one. The cost of this is exactly, 'cause I have this down exactly, uh, 1,056,260, so it's Um, that's the difference between the end-hung and the center-hung option. Are there any questions about that?
So if you get this end-hung, or this center-hung scoreboard, you'll, you'll forego the, the end scoring pieces?
Yes, we would forego the end scoring pieces. The end scoring pieces would be two boards at the end, a center-hung is four, and it's also on a hoist. Um, that's why the expense difference, it's quite a bit more expensive.
And the ribbon board?
Ribbon board right now is scheduled to be on the straightaways of the arena, but not enclosed in the circle on the west end. And the ribbon board, um, is, uh, part of the ribbon board is necessary, you have to have at least those straightaways for emergency, uh, notification to audiences. Um, so that is in the project, um, to complete that around is not, not in the project.
Any questions for Mr. Balter? Greg Strowman.
Thank you, Mayor. I don't have a question, but, um, I, just a quick comment, I've been attending a lot of the Civic Center board meetings, um, with Mr. Balter, and I am amazed at the great lengths that his staff and the board make to try to make this work and to cut expenses. They make, it's like a challenge, every, every day, it's like, every meeting, someone says, "Well, yeah, we were able to do this and make this work," and these people are working really hard at trying to make the best facility that we can possibly have for the money that we have to invest in, and I just appreciate that. Thank you, that's all.
Ron Wythenbach.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, and I, I don't think I could think of a better person to run the Civic Center. I mean, I've had a lot of experience with you over the years, but, uh, have you, do you guys receive any of these funds already, from the COVID funds?
Um, at the Civic Center, in our operating, we did receive some in, uh, 2020, uh, for the operating. We did not receive, um, about 350 on the construction project, and that number's growing still, so. I, I'd like to say that if it wasn't for COVID, we would have gotten most of the way there, 'cause we probably would have had an extra 400 there, and, um, the, what's also narrowing our window right now is the cross, uh, the cost of product right now. See, the last six, eight months, product and the ability to ship it and that stuff has cost more and more and more. Um, had we not had that, I think we would have squeezed out maybe 75% of the money from that.
You got about a million dollars for operating revenue? Is that about right?
Excuse me?
About a million?
For us, on, um, operating revenue?
Operations.
1.1.
Okay. Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Okay, that appears to be all the questions on that topic.
Right.
Go on to the next one.
Yes. Um, the next one is the Adam Street, uh, property project, or I'm calling it a project. The Adam Street is a property, we call it Adam Street, it's on the corner of Adam Street and North Street, which is directly across from the Civic Center. A lot of you might be familiar with it, there's an old jail and an old school building attached to that jail that was there. Uh, you guys probably know the history of that better than I do. Um, it, it hasn't been used in that capacity in a long time. And, uh, about five years ago, a little more than five years ago, uh, the city purchased that land from the county for a really good deal. The deal was really the value in the property and not the value of the buildings that were on there, because at that time, they were already pretty much useless, unusable at that time, and needing a lot of, um, uh, repair. The city, uh, did give us the keys to that building, and we've been using that property as storage. Um, the, uh, external part of the property, we fenced it in so we could put some of our, uh, machinery up there, our big equipment, um, and get it away from Civic Center parking lots, at least some of it. Um, but the building itself, uh, we originally stored a bunch of stuff in there, but anything that was important to us, we got out of there, because we're not trusting the building any longer. Now, building is dilapidated, and, and frankly, I believe it's, it's a little bit of a hazard, because, um, uh, our staff, we only go in there when absolutely necessary, and when we do go in, it's with a respirator-type of mask and that kind of thing, there's mold growing in there. Um, and what, our fear is eventually that building is going to maybe have a roof collapse or something like that. We do know that there was asbestos built in that building, and that might cause a larger hazard. So, uh, my request here is actually in two parts on this project. Number one is, one, I'm highly recommending, I'm highly recommending that we tear that building down, that we raise that building. I, I think it's, uh, a hazard and it's a problem. Um, the cost in raising that building, I was talking to, uh, Public Works about this, and they estimated, uh, demolition at 150, abatement for asbestos and whatever else they find at 50, and, uh, oh, they had a contingency of another, another bit, so it's 250 total, 250,000 total to raise that building. I'm highly recommend we do that, I really believe that's a hazard up there. Um, we are, the only thing we're storing up there anymore is, um, stuff that really belongs on surplus, because we're not using it any longer. Um, the outside of the property, we are still using that for some of our, our motors and, and, and large vehicles. So that's one part of that prop. The other part of that property is, what are we gonna do with it? And the city may wanna believe, and we build a fire station or a police station, and I highly recommend we use that, that in the best way we can. If you're gonna ask the Civic Center if the Civic Center had a use for it, we do see a use for that property. Um, I would consider building, uh, a, a motor shop, a, a pole barn up on the north end of that property, so we can store our big equipment under a roof. It's in the weather, it's in the hail, it's in the rain, it's in the snow, and it's in the sun. And our equipment gets, uh, rotted out, or gets damaged by the weather. To have that, our equipment protected by something, uh, would be great. Uh, to build a large pole barn, I don't even need HVAC or anything like that, something along the lines of, uh, electricity would be good, so we can plug some things in. We're looking into some electrical vehicles right now for another project, uh, as part of the new building. So, um, uh, that's one, one thing we'd like to do. Probably 80% of that lot, I'd like to turn it into a parking lot. Uh, we have that nice new north entrance at the Summit Arena, uh, it would be very good use for that, uh, uh, for general parking. Um, we have, um, probably most of that lot could be used for parking, and it would be a very advantageous place to do that. So, I will tell you that I don't know how much faith I have in the estimates I got, uh, from, uh, Public Works on this, it felt expensive, so I think this is the cautious number. But the number of things that went into their pricing of this is building a machine shop was 500,000, uh, large public parking, 700,000, lighting, 100K for the parking lot, um, stormwater, which is something I don't think about, is 100,000 to take care of that, they had $200,000 in design, and they put 150,000 dollar contingency. That's 1.75 million in, in that property. I would, I would think that we could do better than that if we put it out to bid, but that's the number I have today. Is there any questions about that property?
Yes, Richie Nordstrom.
Thank you, Mayor. Uh, Mr. Balter, could, could you share with me a little bit information about the, um, I'm not sure what to call it, but the, anyway, inside that storage building is some, uh, property that belongs to another organization? Have you got any idea how that other property can be utilized, relocated, or anything like that?
You're talking about the neon signs from the historic district, uh, Historic Society?
Yep.
So the Historic Society, uh, came to us right about, just after we had, uh, the city had purchased that property, and asked us at the Civic Center, is there somewhere we could store their neon sign collection? Um, and, uh, we offered, uh, that property up for it, because it wasn't in our way at the Civic Center. Um, so it is being stored in, in a portion of that, along with some of our other things. I, I did let them know that, um, I gave, I let them know last year that they needed to get it out by summer, and they didn't, um, because, uh, we were working on a plan to do something with that building last year that fell through. So since that fell through, I allowed them to continue on, but they, they do need to move that out, because I, I don't trust that building anymore. Um, but that, that equipment, those neon signs belong to Historic Society, and we were just doing them a favor by storing them for them.
And I appreciate that part of it. Um, yeah, um, I haven't had a whole lot of time to be able to look for an alternative location on that, but if, and I know you're overstaffed, I mean, understaffed right now at, at Civic Center, but I'm looking for some ideas on what we can utilize those historic signs on, and where we could, even a temporary storage location in itself. Somebody out there in the public or wherever can, and provide some, uh, uh, storage facility for us, I think that would be a plus, and I hate to lose those signs as well, so. Because they do have some historic value.
Yeah, I believe they were hard-pressed when they were asking us to store them for them, and, uh, for a number of years, they've been up at the Adam Street property.
Thank you, Mr. Balter. Um, and in combining these two projects, I like the idea of the machine shop being located i- in that area, because, uh, I know what you have to go through, a little bit of understanding, especially from the, uh, the electricians and the people that do the ongoing maintenance within the building. I saw their room, what they've got to work with, and, uh, so I definitely could appreciate what the need for that machine shop up there, so. Um, uh, well, we'll, we'll take a look at this, and, uh, have you done any kind of, uh, formalized study on this property as well?
No.
No?
No formalized study. As, in, in, uh, in as far as building new on it or taking down the old building?
Correct. Any design, any design or anything?
Um, no, no.
Nothing formal?
Like I said, uh, what we would wanna build is pretty simple, uh, of a building up there, um, um, just, just large enough to hold all of our big equipment, uh, to get it out of the weather, and to remove it from Civic Center property, freeing up property there. And, but that's what we'd like to do with it. And there might be other uses for that property the city could look at as well, just.
Sure, and, and, uh, and then, uh, any timelines that you're looking at right now? On this, on this, just specifically with this property?
If, if we wanted to time it out so that it was, a, a parking facility would be usable with the new building, then we would be, uh, looking for to do this project this summer.
This summer?
Yeah. If, if, you know, as far as raising it and taking it down, which is my biggest recommendation, um, I would recommend, uh, to do that when we can. I mean, when we can.
Understand. Thank you. You've given me a lot to consider. Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay. Jason Solomon.
Thank you. Uh, real quick, Director Balter, first of all, thank you for the honor you showed the other departments, I thought that was pretty cool. Um, hopefully, easy question, how many parking spots are we looking at in this location?
Oh, uh, we, we had, uh, oh, I didn't even bring that today. Uh, there'd be several hundred, uh, more than 200 that we could get up in there. I, I wanted to say that it was, uh, just over 300, but I'll, I'll reserve my guess at this point.
Approximately 200 or 300, got it. That's all I needed to know. Thank you.
Evans.
Well, I just wanna point out that that particular property, and I was just eyeballing that a couple of weeks ago, walking around it, it's a perfect example of probably inappropriate spot zoning in the city, 'cause it is a residential neighborhood, and we have to be careful with the way we redevelop that, 'cause those people do live there. Um, also, the neon signs, since Richie bought it up, brought it up, I mean, I can see those things eventually being incorporated into the Sixth Street corridor, perhaps the gap, you know, becomes something beautiful and active, rather than these eyesores we look at in the gap. I mean, we gotta be creative, so it's an asset that we have to value and realize we can use it in the future, which goes back to my question about the city lot next to the fire station. I, for the life of me, I do not understand why people aren't thinking far enough ahead to say, someday, we gotta enlarge that fire station, let's rent the property, let's do it. You know, we gotta start thinking long-term, because property is hard to get, and we can't be giving it away. And we wouldn't have, be having that discussion if somebody had brought this up whenever it was sold, 10, 15 years ago. I, I mean, I don't know if it was sold, but I would have thought that far ahead, 20, 30, 40 years, that's our main fire station, someday it's gonna be four times as big. So, I mean, with the signs, let's not dump them until they have a new home. I mean, I think it's important we start thinking long range. Thank you.
Ron Wythenbach.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I, he kinda had a good idea there, maybe, maybe we could hang them in the Civic Center, the neon signs. Is there places on the, on the, on the hallway walls or in the, somewhere?
No, we, we took a look at that when they first talked about that. First of all, I wanna explain that those signs aren't in, uh, great condition, they need to be refurbished completely, and, and, uh, they're, they're, they didn't have a budget for that at that time, I don't know if they do now. Um, uh, but they need, uh, for overhaul. The other thing is, uh, neon signs, and especially antique neon signs, are very, very delicate. Um, we have some neon in the Civic Center, we go through thousands of dollars a year replacing neon. Uh, adding more neon into the Civic Center is not a very good idea, it's gonna get damaged. Um, so I, I don't agree that that is probably the right place for it, but they are very cool, I've seen them, they are very cool, and the possibilities if they were renovated and all that would be a be a museum piece. I would agree to that.
Thank you. Okay, that appears to be all the questions. Thank you. Now, Public Works Director, Dale Tech.
Thank you, Mayor, and I appreciate whoever put this agenda together to have me last, as I have the longest presentation. According to my notes, I have two hundred slides to go, oh, I'm sorry, it's two slides, so we should be out here pretty, pretty quickly. All right, I've brought, I've brought two items tonight to request potential funding for, you've seen this item before. This is our Jackson Springs Water Treatment Plant. Went online a little over eight years ago. It's a membrane filtration plant. Those membranes wear out over time. They're just like a filter in your car, or a filter in your furnace, that they, they work very well. They do their job twenty-four-seven. You have to flush them to, to refresh them on a daily basis, and over time, that flushing, they just wear out. Certainly, their effectiveness isn't reduced as far as removing microorganisms from our drinking water. So, as part of our plant going online, we planned the replacement in eight years. In fact, just this past week, we finished replacing all the membrane modules in the plant. So the cost to that was nearly one point five million dollars. And what I'm asking for is to reimburse our water fund for that amount, so we can be prepared for the next replacement in eight years. And what that will do is provide some rate stability for our water users. Won't make the rates go down, but that'll be just additional funding that we won't have to collect in the future at our next rate study, and then it'll help hedge a little bit on any inflation we may see over the next eight years. Anyway, really, that's the end of that. If you have any questions, I'd be happy to take them now on this particular request.
Richie Nordstrom.
Thank you, Mayor. Director Tech, would, would you remind me where these membranes are coming from?
Someplace that makes membranes.
Yes, for some reason, I was thinking they came from international.
Actually, Canada, I believe, is where they came from.
That's what I was thinking, yes.
When we first started down the road of the selection of a membrane filtration plant, nearly all of the manufacturers of membranes were international. Germany, I believe, is a big one, and then Canada. Originally, our membranes were made by GE. General Electric owned a subsidiary that did this type of work. They have since sold out to another entity, but the membranes are still manufactured internationally, and are widely used worldwide. Even, I believe, Rapid Valley Sanitary has a membrane plant, but they use a different brand name, so, so it's not unique technology. It's used, used all over, but generally manufactured overseas.
Excuse me for getting a little wonky on this next question, but the, the timing on the order, delivery, and all of that, I imagine there's crossing the border and all of that issues that goes along with that?
Yeah, that, that's really a very minor issue. Certainly, with this replacement, we actually entered into a contract a long time ago. I think it was initially after our startup and our commissioning of the plant to make sure that the performance was what we had paid for, we entered into the replacement contract. So they knew years down the road that, yes, they need to have these available to us in a certain timeframe, and they, and they have performed. It has not been a problem at all, as far as materials or delivery has been concerned.
Thank you, and I think I've got another question for you, but I'll reserve that for another time. Thank you.
Ron Wyffenbach.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Obviously, when we did the Jackson Springs, we knew there was going to be the membranes. We talked about that. Some time ago, the Water Enterprise Fund invested in what is now, or at that time was called the Wally Byham Site land, that was over behind the common sense. This money came out of the Water Enterprise Fund. We put a freeholders group together to try to determine a price to sell it. I mean, to pay back, you know, give that money back to the Water Enterprise ratepayers, because that was money that they invested. They put it in there, and they, and now, we didn't get any buyers at that point in time. So, we traded that land for land that is actually right now west of the airport and north of Highway forty-four, and it's been sitting empty, nothing's been done with it, but yet, that was the money the Water Enterprise Fund invested in this land. I wondered if there'd been any thought about putting a freeholders group together, finding out what that thing's worth, because if I recall, this is about the price that, that thing was worth at the time, about one point two million, right around that area. So I don't know if there'd been any thought about putting a freeholders group together and getting that money back to the Water Enterprise Fund where it belongs.
Right. The, as I understand it from the original purchase of Wally Byham, if you took that original purchase price that the water fund paid for that entire site, and then just applied the CPI to it, it, it amounts to less than four hundred thousand dollars. Certainly, that's different than the value of just real estate today. So, so really, the water department's investment could be looked at as in that four hundred thousand dollar range, three to four hundred thousand dollars. Certainly, there was an appraisal done at the time that that land was swapped, and I believe it was over a million dollars for that value of that property.
I mean, if I invest money, if I buy real estate, I would expect that I would get the return on what the fair market value was, and I would assume that, the ratepayers would assume that. I just didn't know if that had been thought of. I mean, to help shore up, like you said, until we get back on track with, you know, doing what we need to do for rates and those types of things to, but, you know, evidently that hasn't been considered, so.
No, it has not.
Thank you.
Okay, on to the last item.
Okay, the last item is more of a concept than a, let's see, next slide, please. Oh, I can do that. All right, I've got it going. Slide number two hundred. I've been working on the last over a year and a half on an infrastructure development plan that you all have heard about, and it has been going quite slowly. And there's a couple of reasons for that. One is, we are still in the middle of a utility system master plan to try to determine the needs of our utilities over the next one hundred years. That's right, one hundred years. So, those improvements that are going to be necessary are going to help guide us as far as where appropriate development corridors are. So, that'll size water mains, sewer mains primarily, and then also, we need to consider our arterial road network. So later this year, the last half of 2021, and I anticipate the utility system master plan will be done, which will provide us infrastructure recommendations, and then at that time, we can present to you this infrastructure development plan, and it will be more along the model of what Sioux Falls does, where they extend infrastructure, and we're talking all four legs of the infrastructure stool. Transportation corridors, arterial roads, water, sewer, and then stormwater. Get those out in front and, and focus development on areas that are ready to go, where we don't have to worry about traffic capacity issues and stormwater issues, and, and provide an opportunity to have focused growth in areas that are ready for it. So, I made a request, once again, it's just a guesstimate of four million dollars to get started. Once we identify a corridor, and, and this council, and others, the planning commission, take a look at where they believe the growth should occur, and start guiding it that way. So this would certainly be a leg up, an ability to, to get going on some projects to allow that more focused growth. And with that, I'll take any questions.
Ron Wyffenbach.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, and I, I appreciate this one, Dale. I know it's been a big sore thumb for everybody, and this is, and, and, you know, I mean, four million would probably be the bottom of that number, probably, to get something started, but, you know, we've talked about this and seen it, and, and we've dealt with, like, tax districts and stuff like that because of who was funding it, and then what we'd have to give up. But one of the things that is important, like, when we talk about stormwater, we don't look at, like you said, what's going to happen in a hundred years? Okay, we may build this development now, this may service this development now, but then we're requiring that developer to build something bigger, or we'd like to see him build something bigger. And this looks like an opportunity to start, say, you know what? We're going to participate, so we can get this development done today, and not, and then twenty years from now, have to come back, or ten years, or whatever the number is, come back and refund this, or try to fix it, you know, have another council down the road, try to fix something that we probably knew should have been done at the time. We made a decision as a councilor, somebody, you know, because we wanted that project done. This looks like a really, really good opportunity to, and look at it, get out, like you said, get out ahead of it, get out instead of making a two-lane road, and we know that eventually we're going to need a three-lane road, but does it make sense? Because that development there's not going to pay for a three, three-lane road, so it's not going to happen. So you go in, you, you take some of the seed money, you, you feed it in there, and then you can come back and, and, and actually draw a TIF boundary around that area, and recapture some of your own funds back, and not have to put that burden on the, on the developer, and the city gets that return on that, on that money. So this could be actually an investment into revolving, and, and the city would get, and I mean, we had a discussion up here one time about that water service, you know, line, well, if, really, if we need a bigger one, then we should probably pay for that, but then, there's no funding for it. I mean, so then, therefore, the project doesn't get done, so you put it on the back of the developer. Well, when you start doing that, then their risk increases, and all of a sudden, you've got to start giving more on their side, and maybe we don't get as much as we need for our futures. So I think it's a great opportunity, it's a great idea. I think we should really look at expanding on this, something I'm excited about. Thank you, Mr. Mayor, thank you, Mr. Tech.
Richie Nordstrom.
Thank you, Mayor. Mr. Tech, I really applaud you folks for doing the long-range thinking. I know we get accused of thinking short-sighted, but your department does a lot of that long-range thinking, and especially in the utilities department. So I wanted to, first of all, applaud you and your group that has to take a look at that. And then, by the way, we've got some more discussions on the IAG, that's the Infrastructure Advisory Group, so some more, some more challenges in that area. But the part that I'm really interested in, in supporting this program is, I'm assuming we've got more details to come out on this, correct?
Correct.
I'm really interested in this because of the leapfrogging process that we're doing now. But what I mean by that is, I'm not going to point out any specific projects that we've done in the past with TIFs, but essentially, what we've been doing is doing the leapfrog process, and then what we have to do is rely upon CIP or some other revenue source to build the infrastructure for that, connections to that area that is brown space or green space in between the new development and what the city currently has. So I'm really looking forward to getting into the details on this, so, and it also may affect what we see on the TIF policy changes. So, have you got any thoughts on any of that that I just mentioned?
Well, I, I guess I'd like to add a little perspective, and a little historical context to, to all of this. You know, if you go back and check our records from the nineteen fifties into the nineteen sixties, the way that the city used to grow was block by block, and there wasn't a push to go out really beyond what was already there. And the city operated under that model for decades. In fact, the city used to build all the infrastructure. The developers didn't, they were assessed projects directly to the, the property owners that were adjacent to a block at a time that the city used to build. And so those property owners would pay the full assessment for the street and the utilities and everything at that time. Sometime in the sixties, that changed, and it may have been, started in the late fifties with a lot of what happened down in Robbinsdale with the expansion due to Ellsworth, when it really took off with the B thirty-six and then the B fifty-two, where we started seeing these large-scale developments. And I don't, was not able to locate any, any history on how all that infrastructure was funded, but I believe it was a partnership where the city did extend some sewer mains and, and, and water mains, and then the developer paid for everything else and was included in the price of the lots. And that's really the model that we're working under yet today. It's, okay, you want to develop in this town, what's, what are your options? First of all, where's the land available, and then what is the utility situation? And, and we haven't done anything, no fault of anybody, that's just the way that development has occurred, particularly the last thirty years in this town. It's, well, we do what we can, when we can, and we've got to get past that. I know people, we compare ourselves to Sioux Falls a lot of the time, and some people like that, some people don't, but they've, they're doing it right, where, obviously, they're flat out there. They, their limiting factor is usually sewer. How do you, how do you gravity sewer development to, you know, be able to treat that water? So, that's what they plan around. They plan on getting sewer extended to these areas and, and priming these areas for growth, and get the sewer in, and then they come back with a road project and water, and put it all in, and it's ready to go. But then they say, okay, if you're developing, you will develop here. You will not develop out there, or out there. We're going to focus it here. If you want to go out there, then everything's on your dime. You pay for everything that needs to be extended. There won't be the subsidy of, of the city paying for some of those costs and then recapturing a portion of that. So, anyway, a little context to where we're at and where we hope to go.
Appreciate it. And one of the other areas that I keep getting criticism about is drainage, and this is kind of a big topic down in my neighborhood, and, so, whatever this, this infrastructure expansion can do, the future development planning on it, if we can avoid, I guess we're a good model for how not to do drainage, so, and now we've got to spend a lot of money to go fix that problem in my area. And, in fact, it's just a couple of doors away from me where it really is a big issue. So, if, if, if that is incorporated into this future development part of it, I think that'll make a lot of people happy as well.
Yeah, that's, that's a critical component of this. In fact, we've, we've done a much better job, I think, over the last decade of, okay, new development, we have to plan for that ultimate regional build-out, and, and have included those. Certainly, your neighborhood, Robbinsdale area, what they did at the time is what everyone did. I mean, so it wasn't like, that they neglected to do anything, that the standard for drainage back in that day was just quite low, and we don't want to make those mistakes. We want to make sure that those critical drainage infrastructure components for ultimate build-out are included along every step of the way.
Thank you, Mr. Tech. And just a last comment on the drainage part of it, is that I really am looking forward to the opportunity when we can start doing all that fixing and repair, or whatever needs to be done for this total area in my neighborhood. So, I appreciate your comments, and I appreciate the context as well. Thank you.
Greg Stroman.
Thank you, Mayor. Dale, on the infrastructure development plan, you talked about arterial streets. Is there any component of street repair as part of this plan, too? I mean, that's something that we always are mindful of.
Well, street repair, no. Once again, the street component has to mirror the drainage component, that we have one time to get it right, let's get it right up front, so we don't have to go back in, in fifteen, twenty years and add a lane. Let's, let's not do that anymore. Let's, let's build it right the first time and move on. That's, that's the cornerstone of this plan.
Okay. And then, if I may, Mr. Mayor, I don't see anyone else in the queue, I'd like to make a motion to adjourn.
Okay, let's, any more questions for Mr. Tech? Okay, thank you. I think we should address the council discussion since it's on the agenda. I would like to inform you of this, though. I am meeting with council leadership tomorrow to strategize a next step. The good news is, we don't have to be on a timeline to get this accomplished by a certain date. We can reach out to council to get ideas about how we should structure any follow-up from this. I think there are options how we could move forward, but let's go to the queue here. Bill Evans.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. And all the presentations, great, especially the last one, because, you know, I've been talking about that for months, maybe a year and a half. However, we're creating an ethical dilemma for all of us, for me. November 16, 2020, we passed a resolution concerning land swap with the natives. We promised a minimum of $20 million, I believe, and it's in the article I just looked, or something, because I just looked it up in the journal. To me, that is a covenant that we need to honor. There's been no discussion for how to fund that, how to follow through on it. We're dealing with an indigenous population that's been Charlie Brown-footballed for a century and a half, where people make promises and it's yanked out, you know, from beneath them. And so, to me, that's a priority, and we have to figure out, and if we're going to do this, we need to find, we need to find a funding mechanism to honor our commitment to that and our covenant we made with those people. That's all I wanted to say about it.
Thanks for bringing that up, Mr. Evans. We did approve a resolution and have a timeline to bring back a draft plan by the end of June of this year, which is another reason why I don't think we have to rush through much of this. But just about a week or so ago, I received what I think are the final documents from Heather Thompson, the individual representing the group here. And so there are some recommendations on her part to take some next steps to get that forwarded. So we're not quite ready to reveal that yet, but ultimately, this is what's going to happen on that. Ultimately, this council's going to get that question with all of the available funding scenarios, as we can imagine them, coming from our finance office, and you'll be able to contemplate those and modify them as you wish. But I think we're probably accurately on that timetable of the end of June, having that come before you. So that's all I wanted to say on that. Laura Armstrong.
Thank you, Mayor. We're going on about three hours, and I think by my calculations, we've addressed about $30 million this evening. I personally need some time to absorb all this and also discuss with my colleagues, and then, you know, see what those strategies can be, because, like Mr. Evans mentioned, we committed to other projects. That specific one was up to $20 million, not a minimum of, just a clip. Well, that's a big, it's a big whatever, but duly noted, and it's important, and there are people reaching out to us, our constituents, that have ideas, and that is our job. That's why we were voted in, to talk with our constituents and one another, and to make educated, calculated, smart, fiscally responsible decisions. And when we are talking about $30 million, that's a lot of money. And I, for one, I'm not ready to start delegating where it all goes. I need to take this and think on it and sleep on it and talk with Mr. Nordstrom and talk with Ms. Drew and talk with the mayor and Mr. Lehman and everyone else to kind of figure out, because all of these projects are worthy, and there's others that have not been shared with one another as well. So I appreciate Mr. Strowman's motion to adjourn. I know there's some people in the queue, but I would like to think on this. I just think that is the smart thing and the responsible thing to do, because if this drags out much longer, I can't promise I'm going to make a good decision. So with that, I yield. Thank you.
Well, here's, you know, this has been one of Mr. Wyffenbach's frustrations, that we don't follow Robert's Rules of Order to the T, and as I'm sitting here remembering, yeah, I believe a motion to adjourn has to be dealt with and can be made at any time and outranks other motions. And so I guess we should just entertain that. If it fails, we'll continue on with the queue. If it passes, we'll adjourn. Any alternative opinion on that, Mr. Landine, before we go forward? Okay, we had a motion, sorry about that mix-up, but we had a motion from Mr. Strowman to adjourn at a second by Darla Drew. All in favor of that motion, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Okay. Well, sorry about that. Motion passes, so we're adjourned, everyone, and we'll be in touch with options for next steps. Thank you.